All righty. Since this is reorganization night, I will call the meeting to order and we will read our opening statement. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held on Wednesday, 24th of January 2018 at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Trenton Times, The Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey, Inc. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. And then I'll ask Claudia if she'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. Chen? Mr. Cohen? Ms. Coulson?
Present.
Mr. Davich?
Present.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. Royce?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum. Mr. Valvani?
Sorry.
Mr. Valvani?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we will skip over the minutes temporarily.
Claudia?
I'm sorry.
I don't know if you missed me or if I didn't hear you pronounce your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tenenbaum.
Okay, thank you.
Claudia, you have everybody?
Yes, I have everybody.
All right. We'll skip over the minutes temporarily and I will open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board for 2018.
I would like to nominate Barry Royce.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And I think we can just take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Turn the meeting over now to Chairman Royce.
We need now a vice chair nomination.
That's right.
Need a nomination for the vice chair.
I nominate Steve Cohen.
Have a nomination for Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Seconded. I think we can do a voice vote. Those in favor say aye.
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 Against abstentions unanimous. Okay. So now, to make us workable, we need to approve a resolution which was circulated to you that will provide us with the services of the Secretary and Claudia Sebelos is hereby appointed if we approve this resolution. So I think again, do we need a motion to accept the resolution? I suppose legally we do.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to accept and a seconded and then we can do a voice vote.
I move to accept.
We have an acceptance.
Second.
Motion with a seconded. Those in favor, aye.
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 Against abstentions. Okay, Claudia, we've done it to you again.
Thank you.
And finally, we made Karen do work already, but we'll try and officially appoint her for another year and we have again a resolution to this effect and so we would appoint Karen L. Casey as the lawyer for the zoning. A motion to approve this resolution and a seconded.
Still moved? Second.
We have a motion, a seconded. Those in favor of the resolution as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those against abstentions, so that again is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So now what we're going to have to do, I'm afraid for all of you who are anxiously waiting for something interesting, we're going to have to do some busy work, which is going over previous minutes and resolutions and approving them proper. So the first set of minutes we have are those for the 25th of October 1917, sorry, and those were circulated to you with your package. Are there any modifications needed to those? Any changes? If not, a motion to approve is presented and a seconded to that motion is appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a seconded for the motion?
Second.
We have a seconded for the motion. I think we should do, Karen knows who is eligible to vote. Can you?
I will. I'm sorry, Chairman Royce. So this is Bun Drive. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
It's approved.
So the next minutes are for November the 8th, 2017. The same ritual. If you have found any errors in them, we can correct them now. If not, a motion to approve is presented and a seconded for the motion.
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve is presented. Is there a seconded for that motion?
Second.
So again, Karen, could you call the appropriate roll for us?
Are we on the minutes?
Yeah. 28th, November 8th.
November 8th, okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And the last of the minutes is for the 6th of December, 2017. Are there any necessary changes to this? If not, a motion to accept is presented and a seconded for the motion.
I so move.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a seconded. So Karen, if you would.
Yes. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Okay. So all the minutes are now properly taken care of and we can start on the resolutions of memorialization. And the first of these is for Bun Drive and it carries the case number Z1717528. Are there any comments, changes, modifications necessary? If not, then a motion to approve is presented and a seconded.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a seconded?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a seconded. Again, we're making Karen work hard.
All right. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
The next case is 6 Edgehill Street, which carries the case number Z1717548. Are there any modifications required to this? Any grammatical changes you'd like to make? If not, a motion to approve as presented and a seconded to that motion.
I move approval of the resolution.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a seconded to the motion. Can you do that for us?
I will. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Now we come to, I guess it's 30 Southern Way. And yes, and the file number for that is Z1717538.
Move for approval.
A motion to approve is presented. Is there a seconded to the motion?
I second the motion.
Do you have a seconded?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And then we have 88 Valley Road, which is file number Z1717-503. Are there any changes required? If not, a motion to accept as presented?
I move to accept.
We have a motion to accept, a seconded for the motion? We have a seconded for the motion.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And the last one in this set of memorializations is 52 Noel Drive and the file number is Z1717551. C1 there. Any changes required on the document? If not, a motion to approve and a seconded to the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, a seconded for the motion?
Second.
Mr. Floyd, the seconded.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And now we come to what you've been waiting for, the business of the evening.
Chairman Royce, before you begin with 420 Mount Lucas, I am going to recuse myself from this.
I'm sorry, I'm having a bad hearing.
Sorry. Going to say before you begin the hearing on 420 Mount Lucas, I'm going to recuse myself because I have handled legal matters for the Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees and your first applicant this evening is the library director. So to avoid any possible appearance of a conflict, I'm going to recuse myself from this first application and Mr. Gibbons has agreed to step in for me and represent the board.
Okay. Fine. Good.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. It's nice to be here as always. Happy New Year.
So what I would like to do in the normal way is to invite the people who are going to present this to come to the front and sit at the table where we have comfortable chairs and a microphone. And I'll ask Mr. Bridger to read into the record the essence of his memorandum to the board and then I'll ask you to present your case. Mr. Bridger, your need to be sworn.
Oh. Mr. Bridger, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? Yes, sir. Please state your names, spell your names, state it for the record. It's Derek B. R. I. D. G. E. R. Bridger. Thank you very much. Please proceed. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good evening. The applicants Brett Bonfield and Beth Filla are the owners of 420 Mount Lucas Drive Road and they are seeking a floor area variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-74 to permit the construction of an addition to an existing single-family dwelling, properties located in the RB zone and is subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 253, 255, and 246 of the Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. The lot area requirement is 130,680 square feet. The existing is 8,785 square feet. The required lot width is 200. The existing is 50. The required lot frontage is also 200. The existing is 50. The required lot depth is 250. The existing lot depth is 208 feet. And the subject property itself is noncompliant with respect to the right side yard setback. The requirement is 35. The existing is 8. It's also noncompliant with the left side setback. The requirement again is 35. The existing is 9. The garage is also noncompliant with respect to the right side yard setback. Requirement is 35. The existing is 25. It's, the garage is also noncompliant with the left side side yard setback, which is 35 and the existing is 10. The rear yard setback for the garage is 35. The requirement is 35. The existing is 30. And the existing floor area ratio is 14, or 49, which is the maximum, and the existing is a little over that of 15.06. You might recognize this address. We had a variance for this property in May of 2017 to permit the installation of an air conditioning condenser in exception to the required 35-foot right and rear, right and left yard setbacks. The applicant is proposing to basically rebuild in place where the existing rear porch is, construct a slightly larger four-by-12 feet nine-and-a-half-inch addition, which would contain a powder room and an entry foyer. The existing roof will be constructed to match the pitch of the roof on the main house. A larger rear porch landing will also be added. They need D variances for the FAR. As I indicated earlier, the maximum FAR permitted in this zone is 14.49. Existing is 15.06 and the proposed will be 15.65. While technically it's a D variance, typically the applicant is asked to show that the site can accommodate the problems handled associated with the increased floor area and not that the site is particularly suited for more intensive development. They also need some bulk variances. Basically, it's just an increase in the degree of noncompliance. The required right yard setback is 35. The proposed is 29 feet to the open porch landing and the required left side setback is 35 and the proposed is 12 feet. And they've requested consideration under the C2 criteria. That's a brief synopsis of the case. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bridger. Do we have any questions, Mr. Bridger? Okay. So if you'd like to present your case, we'll be happy to listen.
Sure. Do we need to be sworn in or are we?
I guess you'll need to be sworn.
I will, I will, in a moment. I just want to mention to Mr. Chairman that I have reviewed the notices provided in terms of publication and mailing and it is legally sufficient as to form and content and the board can exercise jurisdiction.
Okay.
The notice is sufficient. You can remax it out of jurisdiction. Would you please stand?
Sure.
Both raise your right hands. You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth?
Yes.
Would you please state your names, spell your names and spell your last names for the record, ladies first.
Sure.
My name is Andrea Beth Filla, F. like Frank, I. L. L. A.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Brett Jason Bonfield, B. O. N. F. I. E. L. D.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. You may begin your presentation.
So we are requesting to simply enclose our side porch, which is small. And with the D4 variance, which is the floor area ratio consideration, basically, our understanding is that the purpose of that piece of the zoning code is to ensure that the site can accommodate the problems associated with increasing the floor area. And it's essentially the same floor area. It's increasing by a very, very small amount, basically 52 square feet. So it's .59% of the floor area ratio that we'll be increasing by. So it's a very small amount. And then for the bulk variance, our understanding is that our lot is already a pre-existing non-conforming situation. You know, the house is larger than it's supposed to be for its tiny lot and that was already approved before the owners of, the previous owners had the house and when we bought it, it was okay. So basically, we're enclosing an existing structure. Because we're enclosing it, that means that we need to extend the entry. The stairs need to have a landing to go along with code. So that means the stairs have to go out a little bit further. And that's really where a lot of the extra space is coming from. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Just for clarification.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Could you, you had given the increase in floor area ratio. I know you had said there was a, it was usually.
Could you use the microphone? I'm having a job hearing you.
Unfortunately, I have a little bit of, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you just, please just give me the numbers in terms of the increase of the floor area ratio? I believe you said it was 50.
It's .59% difference.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. Do any of you have questions?
Do we have questions?
Or concerns?
Is there anyone in the audience here to address the case? No? Okay. Then I guess we'll go into executive session and try and decide. Do we have any comments? It seems to me are fairly straightforward.
I think, I think the increase in the floor area ratio is.
Is essentially the minimum.
Problem of the, I mean, the setback is.
Still maintained. Oops, sorry. The setback is still maintained and, you know, I'm very comfortable with this. Any other comments? So do we have a motion on the case? If we have a motion and a seconded, we can discuss it further.
I'll make a motion to approve it incorporating our standard conditions.
Drainage and.
The drainage and exterior lighting.
Yes.
You might want to.
The exterior lighting requirement is that if you put exterior lights on the new construction, which you're probably going to have to because you've got stairs, then the light source itself should not be visible from off the property and there must be no light spillage from the shade onto neighboring properties. Okay? And that's, and the drainage thing is basically that you don't increase the runoff from your roof area onto neighboring properties.
Second.
You seconded the motion?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a seconded. Would you call the roll for us and please, Claudia?
Oh.
Ms. Chen? Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And the alternates. Ms. Chen?
They can concur if they.
Can they concur? Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Valvani?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay. The next case for the evening is 170 Terrune Road. It carries a case number somewhere, if I can find it. Yes. And again, I'll ask Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into.
Chairman Royce, Karen, I, I have, I'm working on a project, not in Princeton, with the engineer on this project. And so I just wanted to mention that. I have no problem hearing it.
All right, but you're, you're not doing any work for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't see that as a conflict. Do any board members have a concern with that?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bridger, you were sworn in, I believe, previously?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. Rosso Homes LLC is seeking a C1 variance to permit construction of a new single-family house on a nonconforming lot. Lot does not meet the required lot frontage or lot width. Subject property is located in the R6 zone and is subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The single-family, existing single-family use is permitted as a right. Subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. The lot width requirement is 85. The existing is 75. The lot frontage requirement is 85 and the existing is 75. The applicant states the existing single-family dwelling will be demolished and a new structure will be constructed. The applicant should advise the board as to whether they have contacted any adjoining landowners inquiring if they wish to buy the subject lot or to sell a portion of their lot to create a complying lot. The applicant indicates that the new single-family dwelling will comply with all the applicable bulk requirements. The, the new single-family dwelling will need variances for lot frontage. As I indicated earlier, the requirement's 85. The existing is 75. And lot frontage, the existing is 85 and, I mean, the requirement is 85 and the existing is 75. I would note that the applicant revised their initial submission, which initially required a prevailing front yard setback on Dempsey Avenue. The minimum prevailing front yard was 31. They have now redesigned the house and it complies with the prevailing front yard setback on Dempsey. They are seeking a C1 variance and that's a quick overview of the application. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? So, Mr. Teney, if you would, to make your case.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, is there an engineer?
I'm sorry. Mr. Schmidt, who is our engineer, and Ms. Lahany, who is our planner. So if you will swear, you want to swear them both in this case?
Absolutely. I will if you could just state your full names on the record, please.
Ms. Schmidt, Lady Schmidt.
And Mr. Schmidt, your first name?
David Schmidt, DS Engineering.
All right. If you would both raise your right hands, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, you want to tell us what your profession is and your qualifications very briefly?
David J. Schmidt, professional engineer for 21 years. I have my own company. I've worked for 31 years. I'm a design professional, license number 39409. I have testified in front of this board numerous times and the planning board of Princeton as well and as also the adjacent towns in this area.
We have no problem.
Okay, no problem. Do you want to give us an overview and discuss the engineering aspects of this project for the board's edification?
Yes, I do. I have a very short presentation as we have a professional planner. I'll be redundant, a few things that Derek went over. The property is 170 Terrune Road, Princeton, New Jersey, block 7008, lot 1. It's in the R6 zone. The property is 75 feet in width and Section 10B, 246 of the Princeton Zoning Land Use Ordinance requires that the lot frontage and lot width for a single-family home in the R6 zone shall be 85 feet. So we're deficient in length on the lot frontage and lot width. The proposed project, the applicant is proposing to construct a two-and-a-half-story single-family home on the property in place of the existing one-and-a-half-story single-family home, which is intended to be demolished. The proposed new dwelling will have a one-car garage, the sufficient space to allow for a second car to be placed in front of the garage and beyond the front required setback. So we can park the car behind the existing garage and still, there is a 25-foot space in between the redway and the property where you cannot park a car. We are out of that area. The proposed project, the applicant is proposing to construct a two-and-a-half-story, single-family home on the property in place of the existing one-and-a-half-story, single-family home, which is intended to be demolished. The proposed new dwelling will have a one-car garage, sufficient space to allow for a second car to be placed in front of the garage and beyond the front required setback. So we can park the car behind the existing garage and still, there is a 25-foot space in between the roadway and the property where you cannot park a car. We are out of that area. A stormwater management report or plan is not required because we are reducing the impervious surface coverage by 1,057 square feet. So we are reducing the impervious surface coverage so there's less runoff, so therefore we don't need to do stormwater management per your ordinance. The engineer plot plan and the architectural plans, I believe, fit seamlessly into the neighborhood. They're going to... I'm putting the house in the exact same location as the existing house, and it will meet the setbacks, as Derek said. A C1 hardship bulk variance from Section 10B 246 of the Princeton Zoning Land Use Ordinance is required to permit construction on the property where the lot frontage of 75 feet is what we have and 85 feet is what is required. We have an exhibit, which is really not an exhibit, is what was used for submitting to the planning board. We can mark it as a 1, but it's...
Zoning Board.
Excuse me?
Zoning Board.
Zoning Board, excuse me. That was submitted to the zoning board. It's the same plan that you received to the planning department, and it is the... It's entitled a variance plan prepared for lot 1, block 7008. It's dated August 31, 2017. It was revised two times. The latest revision is January 5, 2018, and it was prepared by my office. Other than lot frontage and lot width, the subject property conforms to all bulk requirements of the ordinance. The lot size is 13,395 square feet, where 10,890 square feet is required. Lot depth is 178 feet, 178.6 feet, and 85 feet is required, so we meet that. The front building setback for Turhune for the new home is at 50 feet, where the prevailing setback is 39.5 feet, and the prevailing ordinance is 25, so we meet the prevailing setback, which is, there's two different placements on houses in Princeton nowadays. You have, what is the ordinance, which is 25 feet? Which is located right here, but there's also, we measure houses left and right to a distance of 500 feet to get a prevailing setback, and that came out to be for Turhune, it came out to be 39.5. We moved it to 50 feet. And for Dempsey, prevailing setback for that was 33.3 feet. Or you can go plus or minus 2 feet, so it's 31 feet, so we're holding 32 feet from Dempsey Avenue. So we meet the prevailing setbacks, so therefore we conform with your ordinance. Rear building setback for the new home is 75.9, where 15 feet is required. The right side setback for a new home is 18.3, where 15 feet is required. The building height is 29 feet 11 and 8 inches, where 30 feet is permitted, so we meet that requirement. The proposed dwelling is being located in the same location as the previous dwelling, thus no new ecological or environmental change to the property. The impervious surface coverage will be reduced from the previous design, and the drainage patterns are identical to what was previously on the site. The existing property is currently served by public water, public sewer, gas, electric, and local telephone. The proposed dwelling will access the same utilities and the same service lines wherever possible. Residential garbage will be collected by curbside pickup on a weekly basis.
Further, I have a couple further questions. What's the... You visited the site, correct?
That is correct.
What's the state of the house now?
The house is pretty much rundown. The vegetation is overgrown, and in my opinion, it's an eyesore.
Now, explain further about the condition now, the stormwater, and if we're granted the variance and we can build a house, how we're going to improve the stormwater.
With doing several properties in Princeton now, we've come to the agreement that we could... The best way to utilize and keep runoff going to adjacent sites is to collect the roof runoff to a discharge header system and run a perimeter drain around the house. Usually you start with a 4-inch, you end up with a 6-inch line, and pipe it directly into the storm sewer system. That way, that water that used to be, which is the most surface area, that its intensity gets directed directly into a storm sewer system, therefore it does not run to an adjacent property. That's what we've been doing now, and that's what we're proposing to do here. Any runoff from the sides of the lots is all directed down to either Dempsey or it's Turhune, but that area is minimal and it's not intense because you have the soaking of the water in the soil, and then it's directing right to the roadway anyway. So we are not discharging any water to any of the adjacent properties, and we're a corner of lots, so there's only the rear, which water's not running uphill, and the side, which is very little, it's a 15-foot strip, but that's being directed all down to Turhune.
What's the... What's now the... How the stormwater... How's the stormwater taken care of now?
Well, it's going to... It runs in a north... From the north to south of Turhune Road, roof leaders and everything are, if there are even roof leaders down, it's just basically running to the surface ground and then running to either Dempsey or Turhune.
So there's no header system, correct?
There's no header system, and as I said, the drainage patterns are staying the same, but I think we're improving it by putting a header system.
Some of the neighbors are here, and they were worried about also the stormwater. So we met with them outside when you were doing the minutes and the resolutions, and you want to tell us what we agreed to to help the stormwater out further?
Well, what we agreed to do is, what they also were happy to hear is that we're taking the roof leaders and directing it into a storm sewer system. They also have concerns that the driveway itself is creating or is creating the problem. There seems to be some type of storm drainage problem on Turhune Road. When a heavy, heavy rain comes, Turhune Road starts to flood. We are reducing the impervious surface coverage by 1,000 square feet, so it's going to help, but if there's an issue with the pipes themselves, I'm not correcting it. We're helping to relieve it, but we're not fixing a problem that might exist inside the interior of the pipes. Jack West isn't here, and I didn't get the chance to see if there is an issue with the storm drainage pipes, but by putting the pipes from the discharge header system right into the pipe, that alleviates the surface runoff. So if there's a leaf problem or some type of clogging of the grates, at least the water from the house is going directly into the storm sewer system. They were concerned with the drive, so I said I could actually put a little lawn inlet that can collect some of the runoff from the driveway, collect it right here, and that goes right into the storm sewer system. That will help the intense runoff that we have, but other than that, that's the best, I think, the best solution we have for the adjacent property owners and the people that are here today.
Okay. So we're going to agree to put a lawn inlet, subject to Mr. West's approval, correct?
That's correct.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Mr. Bridger, the borough engineer takes care of stormwater considerations. Is that right?
That's correct. This application actually reduces the stormwater impervious coverage on site. They're not required to do a stormwater plan per ordinance, but as you can hear, they've agreed to address the concerns about the water going to the adjoining properties.
The one that is being proposed sounds reasonable, but...
It would still be reviewed by Jack.
Make sure it works.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any questions in addition?
Chapman?
Yeah.
Or one of your witnesses going to be able to address Mr. Bridger's comment with respect to the ability to get land from any adjacent lots?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Elizabeth Lahaney, will you be sworn in, please?
I'm sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You want to give us your qualifications, then?
Sure. I am a principal at Phillips Price-Gregil. We're a planning and real estate consulting firm located in Hoboken. I'm a certified professional planner in New Jersey, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I've testified in front of and on behalf of zoning boards throughout the state.
Fine.
Okay.
Go for it.
So, thank you. So I was retained by the applicant to provide planning testimony in support of the two variances requested for lot frontage and lot width, which, as has been said a couple of times, it's required to be 85 feet in the zone, in the R6 zone, and we are, it's currently 75 feet, and we're not proposing to make it any wider than 75 feet. One of the reasons that we can't, are we, we're having trouble making it wider to be conforming is we're on Dempsey Avenue and Turhune, so we can't go into Dempsey without taking up a portion of the road. You know, we can't expand in that direction. And then the next-door neighbor, I think, has an accessory structure close to the, in that corner lot, and we wouldn't be able to expand in that direction without impacting the neighbor severely. As was indicated, the existing home on the structure is one-and-a-half stories. It was, according to the tax records, built in 1959. It's 1,800 square feet and has been testified to. It's fairly rundown. It hasn't been taken care of. It hasn't been kept up, and vegetation is sort of overgrowing the site. As has also been indicated, the existing home doesn't meet the lot width or the lot frontage requirements. And so we think these variances can be granted under the C1 hardship variance, which, and I'll read to you, although you probably know it, that this, "We have to prove extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property or the lawful structure existing thereon, which results in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship." You know, the lot meets the minimum lot size. It's actually, the minimum lot size is 10,890 feet. We have 13,395 square feet. Sorry, square feet, not feet. The lot is very narrow, or it's not very narrow, but it's deficient in its width, but it's actually quite deep. It's only required to be 85 feet deep in the zone, and we're at 178.6 feet deep. So it's sort of an unusual lot for the zone, where it's almost twice as deep as need be and 10 feet short in terms of the width. As I said, you know, we can't add any property, so the strict application of the standard makes building any conforming home difficult. There's going to be no substantial... With regard to the negative criteria, there'd be no substantial detriment to the public good. We are replacing an out-of-date home that has limited market appeal, I think, in the current marketplace, and we think that we're going to be benefiting the streetscape and the aesthetics of the neighborhood by providing a brand-new home that, you know, we think is tastefully designed and not out of context with the other homes on the street. There's a significant amount of vegetation on the site, and we are not proposing to remove any vegetation except for trees that are already dead or, you know, clean it up because if you've been out there, it needs to be cleaned up. With regard to the impact on the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, I know that tear downs have been an issue in Princeton, that were identified in your master plan, and your plan recommends using zoning to limit the volume and bulk enassing on heights, coverage, setbacks, stories, attics, and basements. And our proposed home complies with all of those regulations. It's just short on this minimum lot width and minimum lot frontage. We're a relatively unique case in the neighborhood for to have this situation, and we think granting these variances won't be, you know, won't set a precedent, won't be precedential since this is such a unique situation. And we think in this instance, flexibility is warranted in order to let us upgrade the property. That's all I have.
Did I understand you to say that you're not going to be removing any living trees from...
That's correct.
The property? Was that...
Correct. There's some dead trees that we have to remove, and we're doing some foundation plantings. That's what the variance map shows.
Is the house now occupied?
No.
Now, how long has that been? Do you know?
I don't know, but the window, I went by there today. The windows are boarded up. There's no glass in the windows. It's just, looks like Skid Row. How long has it been? I don't know, but it's terrible. I, you know, that's my opinion. I mean, if you took a view, it's just terrible. And it's, it's like, has vines all over it.
You are correct.
Yeah, it's got, like, vines growing over it.
I'm sure most of us have seen the house.
Oh, have you?
Yeah. We generally go around and take a look. So I saw it, but I couldn't tell whether it was occupied or not.
No. How could that house be occupied? It doesn't have any windows.
Okay. You've made your case.
Yeah.
You're too anxious, but you can come. I was going to say, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the case? So you can use the microphone there, and you'll have to give us your name and be sworn to be truthful.
Does the microphone work? Yes, I think it's on now.
Good.
Ma'am, could you first state your name and address for the record?
My name is Terry McIntyre, and I've resided for the past 20 years at 37 Dempsey Avenue, which is two houses up from this house.
All right, Ms. McIntyre, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm here, actually. My name is Terry McIntyre, and my husband, Scott Carver, who is flying in from Houston, so he's not here, both support this request and ask that the zoning board grant approval tonight. The house at 170 Turhune has been abandoned 12 and 1/2 years. As you can see at the photo submitted, the house is completely dilapidated. This house has plagued our neighborhood for a variety of reasons. Over the past eight years, I have worked with the Health Department, the Police Department, the Zoning Department, the Building and Construction Department, the mayor, and the county due to situations at this property. In 2010, the Health Department became involved because the property had become overrun with rodents. Abandoned five years at that time, it had been determined that food was left behind when the owner went directly from the hospital to assisted living. The Health Department contacted the family in Connecticut, and it was cleaned out. However, the windows were left open, and for the past seven years, the neighborhood reeks of pungent smell of mold every spring and after every rainstorm. Through 2013, a group of teens found the property a place to loiter, drink, smoke, and party. Fortunately, a few drive-bys and visits from the police, they relocated. In 2014, a mosquito infestation created by year-round stagnant pools of water prompted representatives from the Mercer County Mosquito Control Office to visit the property and contact the family in Connecticut to remedy. In 2016, a fire on the property took down a tree and one of the utility lines connected to the house. Fortunately, it happened in the day versus night and was called in by an alert neighbor. In 2016 and 2017, the family addressed the overgrown, very overgrown yard situation. It's much better now, hard to believe, by hiring a landscaper in a quid pro quo agreement. The out-of-town company ran their business from the house, keeping equipment in the driveway and on the road surrounded by cones. They kept a dumpster on site that continually overflowed with trash. They brought landscaping debris from their clients' homes and left them on our road for weeks until the town did their pickup for Section 1. This only stopped when we got the Building and Construction Department involved. The overgrown trees continually cause a blind spot when pulling out of our road, so we all pitch in and cut back the trees. Now, the reason, you probably think we're crazy, we haven't come sooner, but the reason we babysat this issue all these years is because the family, we, the family couldn't do anything until the owner passed away. Blanche was our neighbor personally for seven years. I drove her to McCaffrey's, the Jewish Center town meetings. We had her over for meals, and that's why we were extremely compassionate and patient toward this adverse situation at 170 Turhune. However, like, it's time to do something constructive at this property and to make something happen now. Blanche passed away in late 2016, allowing the family to sell the home, but the home has been a pending sale since June 2017 because understandably, the builder wanted to get approvals before closing on the property. They've been trying to get on to the zoning, September, October, November, December, and finally now, January. So I ask, please approve this application. It appears reasonable and appropriate to our neighborhood. As a point of reference, since I've been there last 20 years, in recent years, nine of the 10 houses on our road have undergone or are currently undergoing renovation and construction. Two tear downs, the third is in the planning process, two second-floor additions, three major renovations. This application would allow it to be the ninth home to undergo a construction project. It is also important to note that the town has recognized our neighborhood as transition, and this past year, in 2017, they reassessed the Dempsey Kyler, and I put it in quotes because that's how it was given to us, Dempsey Kyler Jefferson Neighborhood Tax Assessment, seven years after the 2010, because they said this is appropriate change in our neighborhood. That made our taxes jump $1,700, but ironically, I live two houses up, two abandoned houses, one for 12 and 1/2 years and one for a year and 1/2. So one of them is 170 Turhune. So please approve this application as quickly as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Steve Saxwiler. Excuse me. I'm attorney for two of the neighbors of this property, Kip Cherry at 24 Dempsey and Beverly Costonas, the next-door neighbor immediately to the east at 178 Turhune. I just have a couple questions. Mr. Schmidt, the existing home is one-and-a-half stories. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're proposing a two-story home?
Two-story, just under 30 feet.
And that will then increase the amount of shade that goes to my client's property immediately to the east. Is that correct?
I'm not an expert at that, but I would assume it would.
Well, you can use common sense, right? Common sense tells you that if...
The extent is, I didn't analyze, but yes, a 30-foot house is a little bit higher than a 25- or 24-foot house.
Okay. With regard to the traffic... With regard to the traffic, if the driveway for this home was placed on Dempsey Street rather than Turhune Street, it would be a safer circumstance, would it not?
We discussed that in the hallway, I mean, I'm not, we did not do a traffic study, correct? So it's not a requirement to do a traffic study, so I'm getting from you that Turhune is a more busy street, or from the owner, so I'll agree with that, that Dempsey might be a safer exit place, but we do have a turnaround so that the cars come out of the garage and they have a way to exit onto Turhune going forward as opposed to rear. So I still believe it's a safe exit point for this house.
You're assuming, of course, you've got a one-car garage, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if there was a second car, it would be in the driveway?
Right, there's a turnaround, though, the car that's parked behind the garage can access turnaround and then still exit.
But if there was a second car in the driveway, that turnaround would not work?
Well, technically, he could probably park in the turnaround. I mean, that would be...
And then the turnaround would not be available for the first car?
Well, no, it's a significant twenty-foot-wide turnaround, so I think you could park a car and two cars probably negotiate it if had to be. You know, you're asking me, are these going to have three cars? They are under the lot coverage, they could add if the husband and wife had a car and a child had a car, and you had to accommodate a car that needed to exit forward, we could make that turnaround larger, and it would not really increase the impervious surface coverage that much, but we're not proposing that. We're, right now, it's just two cars for the house.
But if that was to, if those cars were to exit onto Dempsey, much less traveled road, that would be a much safer alternative, would it not?
It would.
Okay. How did you determine which trees are living and which trees are dead?
Our surveyors, they are, Princeton is not the only township that requires trees to be located. The surveyors that I use, these fiscal associates have been in this business for years, and they have to, they're not arvanists, but if there's no leaves on it, they consider it dead. I guess if they get a stick and they find it, and they break it, they consider it dead. So they determine the trees by eye and with years of experience, but they are not arvanists.
Okay. That's all I have for these witnesses. I would like to put my clients on.
You may indeed. They have a right to talk.
Where would you like them to, should they stay where they are? How would you, they need to be near a mic.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on. Oh, yeah.
Ms. Cherry, we need to swear you in, so if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? Thank you.
Yes, I do. I live at twenty-four Dempsey, which is just up the hill. Dempsey is an inclined road from Turhune, and I want to thank Derek Bridger for his efforts to get the prevailing setback in place on Dempsey. So we are looking at the second revised design, and the setback is now almost twice as much as it was before. So we're extremely pleased with the progress that we've had in terms of making the site work better. Nobody is saying that that house should be retained. It obviously is in bad shape, and it needs to come down, so we don't have to get into a lot of discussion about that. So as far as the seventy-five feet is concerned, I just want to mention that there are two other lots in the area that also just have widths of seventy-five feet, a lot right across the street on Dempsey, and my own lot, which is up on Dempsey. So it's not unique to have a lot of only seventy-five feet, but we're happy to see it developed, and we don't have a problem with the variances so far as the seventy-five feet. But we are very concerned about stormwater, and that's why we're here, just to bring that to your attention and to hope that you consider that possibly in the conditions that you put on this. The topography of the areas I mentioned, Dempsey Avenue is on an incline, and it often has pooling water at the bottom. And in heavy, heavy storms, we've actually had to have the intersection shut down, the Turhune-Dempsey intersection. So there's a lot of water coming down that street, and a lot of water being contributed by one-seventy Turhune Road, the building, the property that we're talking about. And so we were talking out in the vestibule there about what could be done about that, and we have a couple of suggestions. Basically, what they're planning to do is use the same driveway that is there now.
May I use your laptop? Why don't you come over here?
All right.
Can everyone see this?
No. It was much better where it was before.
There's not too much light.
But it's good exercise.
Well, I'll be the board. I'll be the...
Okay. So you can see right here, this darker area, that's the driveway, and it's exactly the same driveway that is there now. The one difference is, is that this driveway is going to have a slope, the other driveway is flat, pretty much. And currently, there is water that pools in that driveway. Somebody mentioned pooled waters, that is one of the locations where there would be pooling water. So obviously, you don't want that, but you also don't need to have a steep slope in which the water is pouring into Turhune Road, and that's the situation that we're concerned about. If you look at the topo lines, you can see that the garage entrance is around one hundred and four, and you can see that Turhune Road is ninety-nine, that's five feet differential, which is fairly steep. And so what we're asking is, are there some other ways that we could control the stormwater better? And we're all trying to be sustainable these days, that's one of the things that the town is trying to do. So we have a few suggestions for your consideration, and I should note, too, that the house is being planned to be closer to Turhune than it is now by thirty-six feet, which means that the driveway is going to be a little shorter. The plate, the foot plate of the house is just a little bit bigger, according to my calculations when I did some measurements, than the existing one, but the reason that the impervious surface is a little bit less is because the driveway is considerably shorter. This area here is actually part of the house, and now it's, yeah, part of the driveway, and now it's going to be part of the house.
When you're pointing to this area here, you're pointing to the...
Garage.
...structure of the building.
Right. So, and just to get you oriented, here's Dempsey Avenue here, and here's Turhune, and here we have a garage and a doorway. That's all that's on Turhune, is a garage door and a doorway. And the long length of the house is along Dempsey Avenue. Currently, the current house has its front door on Dempsey Avenue, which makes a lot of sense. So while the garage, you came in from Dempsey Avenue, entered the garage, which was cut into the ground, so it was a basement garage, the front door was on Dempsey Avenue, and so it put its fancy face towards Dempsey Avenue. Right now, they're proposing to put the side towards Dempsey Avenue. So here are our suggestions. The first one is to lower the grading a little bit so that, for the whole house, so that you're not going so up, so, such a slope to the garage. And that would reduce the stormwater coming down the slope from the garage, and it would also reduce the rate of the water coming off the property altogether. And if you added some swales, there are already some, but if you added some more swales and maybe a dry well, that would really enhance...
I don't really mean to interrupt you, but zoning is not going to be concerned with the issues of the water that you were raising, and as Mr. Bridger pointed out earlier, and as I tried also to say, the town engineer, the borough engineer, whatever we call him these days...
Right.
...has a responsibility for making sure that whatever is done on this site doesn't increase the runoff onto neighboring properties. That's, we will add that as one of the conditions, but we can't do anything about it, it's in the borough engineers.
Right, so I'm...
So I think we've understood that point.
Including that as a condition.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, in weighing the substantial detriment to the public good, you can look to such factors to see whether or not there is any detriment to the public good by the particular layout of this home, and whether it can be ameliorated.
Yeah, we're not suggesting that you not do the variance, we're simply saying that you should be aware of the stormwater problem, and you often add conditions, and I understand that that's pretty routine.
We always add a condition about light, we add a condition, which we do out of habit, but we have no real responsibility for it, about water runoff, because that is the thing that normally, in these situations, concerns the neighbors a lot.
Right, well, I'm just giving you a little detail so you understand the issue about stormwater, because it's important that that condition really be met well. And the other suggestion we were going to make is that the garage be moved to the north side of the site, rather than having the cars coming out on Turhune.
That's not before us, so, you know. If you see one to take care of a small lot or a lot with inappropriate dimensions...
Well, the applicant did measure that they'd be willing to connect some of the driveway to the stormwater system, and we think that would be an improvement.
That's correct.
But in our, in our standard...
So thank you very much, I think that covers...
Thank you.
...covers our concerns.
Good.
And I should say that this house was never abandoned, the lady who lived there was paying the taxes all along on it, she just didn't want to sell it because she hoped someday to come back, and, you know, we all have to be sympathetic to a person who feels that way. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this case?
I'll just ask you a few questions.
Oh, all right.
Ms. Kostonis, can you just state your name and your address for the record, please?
Beverly Kestenis, K-E-S-T-E-N-I-S. I live next door at one-seventy-eight Turhune.
Please, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Kestenis, do you have any concerns about the shade that would be coming from this new house onto your house?
Yes, I do, because it would come directly onto our house, the way it's situated in the plans, yes.
And in the winter, what effect would this have?
In the winter?
In the winter, when the sun is lower...
It would make it quite dark, yes.
It would make it dark quite early.
Yeah.
You've lived in this home for how long?
I've lived there for twenty-two years. I'm representing Hans Breen, who has lived there since nineteen eighty-five. We both live in the house, okay?
And you've had an opportunity to observe the traffic on Turhune and on Dempsey?
Yeah, Turhune is extremely busy, it's, the New Jersey Transit runs buses on it, the schools run buses, we have dog walkers, we have people who run on this road, there's a lot of traffic, both vehicular traffic and human traffic.
And your driveway actually is on Turhune, is it not?
Exactly, yes.
And do you have difficulty getting on and off Turhune?
Well, we would never back out of that driveway, we turn around and go out headfirst.
And even coming out when there's traffic, do you have substantial difficulty?
Yes, we have to wait considerably, particularly during rush hours, in the morning and in the evening.
And during your years there, have you had opportunity to see the pooling of water that's been testified to here?
Yes, it doesn't take a hurricane, it just takes a large storm, and it will pool back on the road up to our driveway and sometimes beyond, and as someone has already said, there are occasions when that strip of Turhune is closed off, the police close it off, and no traffic comes through.
Okay. So all in all, are you in favor of the changes that were proposed by Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there other people who wish to make comments? Do you wish to make any closing comments before we make a decision?
Well, help out with the stormwater, and Mr. Schmidt says a lawn inlet will take care of most of the stormwater coming off the driveway. Again, the house is, the proposal is to reduce the impervious by one thousand fifty-seven square feet, which is significant. As far as the height is concerned, my only comment to that is, well, sorry about the shade, but we're under the height of the ordinance, and, you know, we're not looking for a height variance. And that's all, and I travel Turhune all the time, and although, you're right, probably if you had a driveway going onto Dempsey, it'd be safer, but between Witherspoon and Harrison, there's a lot of driveways coming out on Turhune, and, you know, we can't, we, at this stage of the game, we really don't want to redesign the house. We redesigned it already to comply with the prevailing setback on Dempsey, so, I mean, and so the only two variances are existing conditions, which we're actually improving because of the pervious, less impervious, and the fact that we're going to add a storm inlet to be approved by Mr. West to take care of, take care of more of the water that would come from the sloping of the driveway on it here.
Good, thank you. So let's go into executive session. What do you think about this?
I'm glad you asked.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. You've spoken so many times, you just flipped.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, it's no problem. I didn't realize you wanted another go.
Yes, I just want to address the standards for the variance. The substantial detriment to the public good should include such things as traffic and the impact of the water on the streets, and if there's an opportunity to have this development, everybody wants to have it. Nobody wants to keep the twelve-year-old house that's falling, falling down and is eyesore there. But if the situation can be improved such that the detriment to the public good is ameliorated by moving the garage to the north, by perhaps reducing the height a bit so that Ms. Kestenis will not have a kind of a Scandinavian winter where the sun, where it becomes quite cold early for her, I, all in all, I think we'll have a better application and one that better meets the criteria for the variance.
Thank you. So now let's go into executive session. What is your pleasure?
I think our, I think our standard requirement as to drainage would apply here in a sense that, you know, we are, as the town is concerned about the drainage and the rate of runoff onto the street, but then our engineer during the permit process will review that, and he'll determine the impact, and I'm sure if it becomes an issue in his mind, that he'll work with the client, with the applicant to resolve it. So I think, I think, you know, that addresses that. With regard to the traffic access, there are many, many houses on Turhune that all back up onto the street.
And presumably, the traffic coming out of this house is coming out nose-first.
Right, well, that's the intent of the...
Because there's a turnaround, and it's probably not more than one vehicle in the morning or something of that.
Yeah, well, it's minimal, probably, and, and an effort's been made to make sure that, to the extent you can, it's been, the impact on the street would be minimized.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other...
Just a quick question, Steve, can you, would you be kind enough to hit me, I've forgotten, the height of a story is what, is it ten feet, is it twelve feet? How do we, what is the height of a story?
Typically, a floor-to-floor height on a house is nine and a half, ten feet possibly.
So when they're talking about half a story, we're talking about, in theory, five to eight feet, is that an understanding? Is that a fair...
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's a zone limit on height, which is what, twenty-nine feet?
Thirty feet.
Thirty.
Yes, sir.
And we're under.
And it's under, it's under that number.
Yeah.
Are there any other things we need to rehearse? If not, do we have a motion? And we will put our stormwater or water runoff thing on the motion and the exterior lighting, shielding lights.
Yeah, sure.
The standard ones that have become some... The standard ones that have become something the board has been concerned with. Do we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'm of approval of it.
Sorry?
I move approval of granting the variances.
Okay.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions that we added. Could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
And do you concur, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you very much. All right, the next case for the evening is 48 Cleveland Lane, which carries the case Have you?
Well, can we-
We should, we should be able to get it on our monitors if-
Thank you.
Here's the expert. Will that come up on our monitor? Or do we have to go home and watch television? Thank you.
Okay. Not to work, we'll just talk.
There's normally an adapter required for an apple. We do have copies of your plans, if-
Okay. Okay, great.
You can go ahead with that. And once Mr. Bridger has given us those, I'll ask him to read his memorandum into the record-
Thank you.
And then get you to make your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridger?
Yes, sir. Elizabeth and Stephen Baglio are the owners of 48 Cleveland, and they are seeking C1 and C2 variance relief to permit the construction of two additions in exception to the required side and rear yard setbacks, and a variance from impervious coverage requirement is also requested. Subject property is located in the R1 zone in the former Princeton borough, and it's subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 17A, 227, and 231 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The su-, excuse me, the subject is noncomplying with respect to the required lot area, which is 20,000 square feet. The existing lot area is 11,630 square feet. It's also noncomplying with lot width, the requirement's 125, the existing is 88. It's also noncomplying with lot depth, the requirement's 125, and the existing is 80. And the subject property is noncomplying with respect to the smaller side yard requirement of 10, the existing is 8. It's noncompliant with a larger side yard requirement of 20, the existing is 17. It's noncompliant with the combined side yard requirement of 30, the existing is 25. It's noncompliant with the required 35-foot setback, the existing is 13 feet 4 inches. The prevailing front yard setback requirement's 46, the existing is 44 feet 4 inches. The impervious coverage requirement is 36 percent, and the existing is 44.8 percent. The applicants were granted a variance in 19, not the applicants, but this property was granted a variance in 1996 for a rear yard setback to permit the construction of a second-floor addition over the attached garage. This project involves the construction of 246-foot second-floor addition over the existing first floor in the eastern elevation of the subject property. The existing first floor is currently noncompliant with respect to the larger and combined side yard setbacks, and this addition will increase that existing degree of noncompliance. And the applicant is also proposing to expand the garage, the attached garage, with a 113 square foot addition, which will violate the rear yard setback. A 160-square-foot kitchen addition is proposed and is permitted as of right. So, following variances are required. Larger side yard setback, the requirement is 20, the existing setback is 17, and the proposing setback is also 17, but it's on the second floor, so that's an increase in the existing degree of noncompliance. They require rear yard setback, existing is 30, the requirement's 30, the existing is 25, and again, the proposed is 25, and this is an increase in the existing degree of noncompliance. The rear yard setback requirement is 35 feet, the existing is 13 feet 4 inches, and the proposed is 10 feet 4 inches. And finally, they are requesting a, an exception to the impervious coverage requirement for, for this lot area is 36 percent, the existing is 44.8 percent, and the improvements will add 1 percent of impervious to a proposed 45.8. So they have requested consideration under both the C1 and the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Bridger?
Thank you.
Okay, so, it's now in your court.
Mr. and Mrs. Bagley, before we swear you in, I'll just note quickly that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction. Now, we'll swear you both in. If you'd raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful. Thank you.
Good evening, thanks so much for having us here this evening. First, we'd like to introduce ourselves. I'm Elizabeth, or Betsy Baglio.
And I'm Steve Baglio.
And our sons are here as well. It's a family affair this evening. So first, I need to say, Chairman Royce, we met you way back in the 90s in Mattie College at Princeton University, so it's very nice to see you again.
We were both Mattie College residents.
And the evil Menders lives after.
Yeah, 90s, early 90s. So we moved back to Princeton in 2011, that's when we bought this home. We love our home, we love our neighborhood, we love our neighbors, and our boys have grown quite considerably since we moved in, as boys do. So we are looking, after six and a half years, to, to add more living space to our home, to make it a little bit more comfortable for the four of us. So I have a whole presentation that we're not able to show you, but I'll just sort of explain it, there is one paper copy going around. There's a zoning map that shows, as you were stating, Mr. Bridger, that it is a nonconforming lot, it's a very small lot for the neighborhood. In fact, our lot is close to half of the area that is required. So we believe our proposed renovation to this home is reasonable, and the reason why variances are necessary is due to the relatively small size of our lot. So, we are requesting three variances, as you know. The first is for a larger and combined side yard setback, the second is for a rear yard setback, and the third is an increase, a slight increase in the impervious coverage on our lot. So the first is for the variance that is required for the second-story addition. I don't know if you can see the, you have the plans as well. We have one room on the first floor of our home, on the eastern side, and we'd like to build a room above it. So again, we're just increasing the existing noncompliance, but we're not actually going closer to the property line. We believe this will fit in with the neighborhood, that the houses around us, this will not overwhelm the houses around us, we're actually one of the smaller homes on our street. So while it would further exacerbate an existing noncompliant set yard setback, side yard setback, the height to setback ratio of the addition would remain in the required range. So we've considered our neighbors at 42 Cleveland carefully. One of the pictures that you have up there is a view from the street, looking down the property line. So we believe even with the second-story addition, there will be adequate space between our homes. Also, along that property line, there's a good amount of tree cover, even in the winter. And so, no matter the season, we believe there to be a good amount of cover there. So the zoning map, there is one image that, that we have prepared to show that the siding of our house doesn't line up exactly with the lot line that is shared with 42 Cleveland. And if that had been drawn at the same angle of our home, as a right angle, we actually probably wouldn't even need a variance for this. Also, regarding sun path, the orientation of our house is such that it would be a very low possibility that a shadow would be cast on 42 Cleveland. That's the first variance for the side yard setback. For the second variance, we're requesting to be able to build an addition to our garage. We're actually only looking to increase the depth of our garage by five feet. The current depth is 17 feet 8 inches, and the lengths of our cars are, one is slightly under 16 feet, and one is slightly over, but a standard parking space is 19 feet, so our existing garage is significantly shorter than what is standard. We have a bike rack hanging at the back of the garage, and we actually don't have enough space to pull one car all the way into the garage. So with this additional depth, we'd be able to park one car in the garage, and then one in the back of the driveway, leaving the front of the driveway clear. So I have some photos, and again, you can share that, I'm sorry, and you could use the computer as well, but that just shows the approximate footprint of, of the addition. So then, we have one photo facing south, and that's the border, that's the property line with 187 Library Place. And there, thank you, there's another copy as well. So our addition, while it requires a rear yard setback, we actually would still be further from the property line than the garage of 187 Library Place. And so, that footprint is on that, that picture as well. So, this small addition would be a great, it would really provide a great daily benefit to our lives. And you can see, if you look sort of from a bird's eye view, it's really a very small, very small addition to that part. And finally, variance number three, we just, given our undersized lot, as you all know, obviously, impervious coverage is calculated based on a percentage of your lot, and as ours is undersized, we obviously have much fewer square feet that we're able to have of impervious coverage. We currently have 44.8 percent of impervious coverage on our lot. That is greater than the required of 36 percent. We're looking to just increase our impervious coverage by 1 percent. So, in our estimation, that, the addition to the garage, that is the only piece that is adding to the impervious coverage. That would be 1 percent, or 113 square feet of existing impervious coverage. We believe it's about one cubic foot of rainwater in an average storm here in New Jersey, and we think this could be drained to and absorbed by our rear lawn, instead of connecting to the storm sewer and not adding to what the town has to manage. We do also have an image of other options we thought of for reducing this impervious coverage impact. One could be to install a rain garden, another is we could actually take back some, we could put some flowers in, in the back of our home, where our kitchen is going to be expanded, that is going to be on top of what is currently a patio. So we could actually take what's left of the patio and, and put something like a flowerbed in, that would actually add impervious coverage back into the property. So we are certainly thinking of that as well. So we'd like to make up for the increase in impervious coverage somehow, and look forward to speaking with you about that. But we do believe the great benefit of adding depth to our garage would, would be enough that we're, that we're really looking to work with you on the impervious coverage. So thank you for allowing us to be here, thank you for also your volunteer service to our town, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Bagley, we'll just mark the exhibit that you handed out as Exhibit A1.
Great.
Do you have any other documents you want to-
No, not at this time.
That's it?
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to look at what I should have seen on my screen, but we've never had this thing working properly for at least three months. Do we have any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this case? Would you come to the microphone? You'll have to go through the ritual of swearing to be truthful, and-
Ma'am, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Lisa Sagal, and my address is 191 Library Place, I'm a neighbor to the Baglios on the western side.
All right, and Ms. Sagalio, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I just want to say, as a neighbor, I've looked, I've looked at the plans, and I have no objection to what they're planning. Okay? I just wanted to support that, that's all.
I'm sorry, I must have missed what you said. You're a neighbor and-
I'm a neighbor, and I just wanted to say that Betsy and Steve have reviewed the plans with my husband and I, and we support what they are trying to plan for their house.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? No? Okay. It seems fairly straightforward, and I think the impervious coverage increase is essentially de minimis, given the nature of the area. We will, per force, add a clause in a variance, if you, you get it, that runoff on neighboring properties should not be increased. And if you have new properties, if you expand the garage and have outside lights, the same normal constraint on not being able to see the light source, and having no spillage over your own property line. So those would be two standard constraints. If nobody has any questions, does that imply we're ready to make a motion and have it So, do I have a motion to approve, as modified, or as? I move- To approve the application, and as requested. Yeah.
Mr. Cohen?
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, Mr. Cohen, C1, C2?
C1, probably.
C1?
I'll second.
And we have a second for the motion? So could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Ockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Do you concur, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
And Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
Good. Does he get a bigger playroom? He was very good, so he deserves it. Okay, we come to the final case of the evening, which I assume is a new case, because the challenge-
Well, no, actually, this is a continuation.
I'm sorry.
I said, no, actually, it's a continuation. You'll remember, you had an initial hearing, and I believe June, and it's been, they've been back, but asked for it to be carried again, so they-
And all the notices have been-
Absolutely, the notices are in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
So the case we're going to hear is the 162 Linden Lane, and this carries the Z1616-386 case number. I'll get Mr. Bridger to remind us of new things that we ought to think about.
Yes, Mr. Wickstead had provided us with a memo detailing changes to the application, and they've withdrawn their appeal of the zoning officer's determination. They're now just seeking a use variance and associated bulk variances to permit the continued use of each property as a two-family dwelling. The proposed use has been scaled- The proposed use has been scaled back from three family as was previously presented to the board at the prior hearings to two-family. The properties are no longer occupying the basement, garden, apartment uses. No plans have been presented at this point, but that's the change in the application at this point, so.
Just for a second, a question for Mr. Bridger. Since plans aren't in yet, does your staff comment still apply to your memo?
Yeah, I mean, for the abandonment of the basement, we didn't need something from the construction official to verify that the kitchen facilities had been removed and that there was no longer cooking facilities down there. And that could be a condition of whatever action the board takes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Everyone hear me okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alex Wickstead from the Foxwell Child Firm here representing the applicant. As was noted, this is a continuation. It was last heard before the board back in June of 2017. It was actually presented by my colleague at the time, he's no longer with the firm. So you have me, but I watched both videos back and I called them the night to tell them that I thought I looked better on camera. So hopefully that holds up, though, that does add ten pounds. But we are here and as Mr. Bridger noted, the testimony before the board back in June was a request for the continuation of three-family on the properties located at 162 Linden and 166 Linden. Since then, to my left is Ms. Simi Bakshi, just going to give a board, you know, an explanation behind the vacation of the basement units and the reason for that. And that's why we noticed now for a two-family, the request for a continuation of a two-family. It's historically been a three-family, but did you want to re-swear?
Absolutely. Mrs. Bakshi, if you would raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Ms. Bakshi, we've, I indicated in my January 12th letter to the board, which Mr. Bridger alluded to, that we're only proposing a two-family use of 162 and 166 Linden. Can you please explain the change from what we had earlier provided?
Can you hear me?
No. Oh, there we go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Alfredo, the architect, walked through our house, both 162 and 166 Linden Lane. And he pointed out to me where there could be problems with the occupancy in the basement. That was the first time I had ever heard an objective argument as to why those basement apartments should not be rented out. And at that point, we took absolutely swift action and I reached out to the two tenants in each of the properties. We terminated the lease and those apartments have been vacated. Up until then, I was completely under the understanding that I was code compliant. It was not until Mr. Alfredo pointed out to me what the problems were that we decided that this was not the right thing to do and we moved from that.
When we're referring to Mr. Alfredo, that's Alfredo Trevino, who's the author of the October 24th, 2017 letter. We're going to, when he appears, when he's going to testify next, we'll enter it in, but it's in our application packet, it was submitted for the October meeting. Ms. Bakshi, just one other question. Could you just please let the board know, if you know, you know, where the tenants went and, you know, they are living somewhere, yes?
Yes. So one of the tenants actually was from mainland China. She spoke very little English and she was the one I had the most problem with. So I used to actually spend my weekends with her, reaching out to prospective, you know, properties that were available for rental. And I went with her because she was actually being lured into a property to share with a gentleman and a dog and I kind of felt very responsible on humanitarian grounds to be doing this to somebody. So I did spend a large portion of my weekends in November and December and she has moved to a property on Ewing Street. And the other tenant moved back to housing on campus. So both of those apartments have been vacated.
Board have any questions for Ms. Bakshi on this? Or if not, we'll bring our architect up to go through his letter.
Just a question, have the kitchens been removed in those basements now?
The kitchens will be removed. There is nobody living there. Everything has been shut off. But I will be taking that next step once I'm guided by the architect as to what needs to be done.
That was done on the advice of counsel, myself, just, you know, we wanted to, you know, we didn't want to take any, other than, you know, removing the tenants, which we represent that we've done. We didn't want to take any action with respect to the properties until, you know, we had an opportunity to appear again for the board.
But none of them are being used, there are no occupants there. I just want to make that, you know, clear in the application.
Any other questions?
Well, I still don't think you're addressing the real issue. The real issue is that the zone is for single-family houses. The ordinance recognizes the fact that if you live in a single-family house, you may have an apartment in the same building. But this isn't the case, as I understand it, that you're coming in with. You're saying, we want to have two houses, which will be, in fact, two apartments each. Is that right?
That's a, yeah, it's a historical function.
How are you justifying that?
We can...
The fact that they exist?
No, I have a planner that will testify as to...
Are you going to bring a planner to talk about?
Yes, we do. I apologize, I shouldn't have mentioned that at the outset.
Who are you going to bring?
You know, in the haste to get Ms. Bakshi, I didn't go through my notes here. To my left is Alfredo Trevino, who was our architect, could be testifying, and Michael Pesolano was our planner. So the idea would be to just to have Mr. Trevino go through his letter.
I think we understand the reason, in a way, that you want to do what you want to do.
Sure.
I think now you've got to justify it.
Understood.
So you should bring...
Because we'll do this in sequence, I'd like to just have the architect go through his, just go through his letter, because there will be, you know, that will dovetail into the planner, but we will, you know, we will get right, we'll get right to this. So, Alfredo. Thanks.
Sir, do you want to state your name, please, and business address for the record?
Alfredo Trevino, architect, or registered architect, State of New Jersey.
All right, and do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Members of the board, enclosed in the packet that I had submitted dated January 12th, the last copy, and I think they're stapled, but the last document is a copy of the October 24th letter. I have printed, if anybody would like, I have printed just a separate copy, so you don't have to, because I know the binder can kind of pull a little bit, so if not, we can...
Mr. Wickstead, you want this as an exhibit?
Yes, please. I guess we'll mark it, I think it's A2, but I have to go back and check the record. Check my notes here. I think A1 is my first option. And everything else is part of the application. Okay, thank you. Marked as A2 as a letter dated October 24th, Mr. Amine, are you familiar with this letter?
Yes, I am, actually.
And is it the letter that was authored by you?
That's correct.
Okay, and could you please just speak, just give a brief background of your educational history and professional history?
I've been an architect for thirty years, doing residential, commercial work in and around the Princeton area. My office is located in Lawrenceville, New Jersey, and...
Have you appeared before this board before?
Yes, I have.
Then we have no problem, we're accepting you another time.
Okay. So I was hired by my client to review two properties, 162 and 166 Linden Avenue. When I showed up, there was three, it was both...
I have a job here and you, I don't know whether it's my age or you're not using the microphone.
Me too, Mr. Chairman. I was hired by my client to basically do a walkthrough of property 162 and 166 Linden Avenue. And they were both being used as three-family residents. One in the basement, one on the first floor, and one on the second floor. The same for both addresses. And basically, we walked through as, for an egress review. In other words, is it safe to come in and out of the place? Are the bedrooms legal? Is there smoke detectors? Is there separate entrances? Are the windows of size and are they basically compatible to be three-unit apartments? And our conclusion was that the basements were not. Clearly, they didn't have egress windows out of the bedrooms. They were just not what we would consider a safe environment in the basement and we basically notified her. We said, you know what, these two houses, right now, the basements are not legal, in my opinion. They, you know, and even though she'd been using it like that for twenty years and they've been reviewed by the township and someone had been inspecting them and reviewing them, nonetheless, I said, you know, it's my opinion that it's not legal and, you know, I basically indicated that she should vacate at least the basement. First and second floor, in my opinion, meet most of the egress requirements, if not all. If there is anything that we would have to do, whether it be a fire rating between the separation and the, and one of the vestibules, we would do that as part of our full drawings and actually submission to the building department for a full code review.
And the conclusions contained in your October 24th letter are consistent with your testimony here tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. I have nothing further for Mr. Trevino unless the board has any questions?
I do have a question. Your assessment that they meet most of code except for what you...
That's correct.
...looked to. Are you talking about current code?
Current code, yes.
Okay. Even though this is an old building?
Oh, yeah, no, no, this is current code because we're looking at it as, you know, the date that we went and looked at it, what the current code is.
Good, thank you.
Do the, excuse me, do the apartments, I'll call them, I don't know how you designate or split them. I assume one apartment in each house is designated as a secondary residence by our standards?
That's the primary reason we're here.
No, I know that, but if that's the case, so do they...
I mean, I don't know if they do or not. There's a requirement for that, the owner has to live there and there's a certain number of rooms.
It talks about the maximum number of rooms and the entries and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, have to have a kitchen, have to have a bathroom, bedroom. It's subject to a percentage of FAR of the size of the property based upon the size of the, you know, if it's two thousand square feet, there's X percent FAR the flat can occupy and it graduates as the house gets larger.
And we don't know if you divide the houses up the way they exist now, they comply?
I don't know.
Okay. Excuse me, did you look at that at all?
No, we actually did not get the square footage of the house. In other words, we didn't actually measure the house. We actually just did a visual and a walkthrough of, you know, first floor, second floor for both addresses.
Okay. With the, you know, we wouldn't be seeking any type of variance from the FAR or any other conditions, so we would, as a condition of approval, we would agree, we'd have to comply with those standards and requirements.
I don't think this is on the bigger point of why we're here, but there is a discrepancy between what it says about 162 Linden Lane, the second floor. It says, as of inspection on, in 1986, there was no kitchen. And the hand drawing that's in our packet shows a kitchen. So there is a kitchen on the second floor at 162?
Yes, there is.
So somewhere between, somewhere in the midst of this, a kitchen got built in there, I guess.
The only thing is, it doesn't have an actual cooking stove, but it actually has a microwave and has a sink and has, you know, the regular facilities for a kitchen, but it doesn't have a stove.
Is that a kitchen?
I mean, I'd have to concede, it's a two-family unit. I mean, it's being used as that, whether it has an actual standalone stove, I think the intent is to use it as two apartments, both dwellings, so.
And there's no reason why we couldn't add one. I mean, there's enough room in the kitchen if we, you know, if that was a requirement that we need to do that, we could definitely do that.
The code requirements, it's need to be able to have food preparation, are you familiar with what their requirement is in terms of what's required for a kitchen?
It's basically, as long as you can cook, and they don't actually specifically say it has to be a stove. So you can cook with a cooktop, you can cook, you know, plug-in, microwave, as long as you can cook and wash dishes.
So then, if, let me try and clarify what I think you have said, that basically the basements have been removed as independent entities.
That's correct.
And then you have on what I would call the ground floor and then the first floor, but you would call the first and the second floor, I suspect.
Yes, yes. So there was three...
There are effectively two apartments.
Yes.
And each of them has a bathroom, each of them has a sort of a food preparation, eating space associated with...
And bedrooms, yes. That's correct.
Okay. And that's true of both of the buildings?
That is correct.
Okay. I think I now understand. All right? So you have...
I have our planner, we'll bring our planner up and I think that's...
Why don't we hear that now?
Do that right now. Thank you.
I have a planning exhibit. Derek, do you want to distribute it to the board? I have...
Give them to Mr. Bridger and he can... So we'll call those A1 or something like that?
Why don't we swear your planner and then we'll mark?
So do you want to describe what you circulated to us and...
We'll do that, as far as Casey, we're going to swear the planner in and then we'll describe and mark the exhibit.
Okay.
Sir, would you state your full name for the record?
Michael J. Pesolano, P-E-S-S-O-L-A-N-O. Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
All right, and do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So Mr. Pesolano, you just circulated for distribution to the board, a one, two, three-page color document on approximately eleven by seventeen paper entitled, "Planning Exhibits for Simi and Anish Bakshi, 162 at 166 Linden Lane, Princeton, New Jersey." Is that correct?
May we do the details of that exhibit after I qualify myself?
Speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
May I qualify myself?
Yes.
Before I go into the exhibit? Would that be appropriate protocol? It doesn't matter to me which order we handle it, but...
No, that would be fine, Mr. Pesolano.
Yeah, okay. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I appeared last year and was accepted by the Princeton Planning Board for testimony. I have not appeared before this board and been accepted as an expert planning witness. But to that end, I have practiced professional planning for thirty-plus years, having originally been licensed in 1984. I've served roughly half of my career as a municipal planner, employee planner, if you will, and the other half as a consulting planner in various roles in both New Jersey and Massachusetts. More recently, I've been appearing nightly in front of boards such as this as an expert planning witness. Also, in my recent past, I've served approximately six communities as their board planner in northern New Jersey. I've been accepted hundreds of times.
I think you are well-prepared to talk to us.
Thank you. Now with that detail out of the way, I'd be happy to focus on why you're looking at the exhibit you're looking at. Starting with page one, this exhibit is a series of photographs, starting with an aerial photograph on page one, showing roughly near the center of the subject property. Circled a very, very tiny dot on this very large map, but I selected this view for the principal reason to show the very interesting location of these two homes relative to the surrounding area from which occupants of these homes would... area from which occupants of these homes would go in their day-to-day business. The subject property showing on page one of exhibit, did we label this A1?
It's A3.
A3, thank you. Exhibit A, page one of exhibit A3, shows the subject property nicely and conveniently situated within walking distance of, on the north side of the picture, Princeton Shopping Center, to the northwest of the property, the middle school, to the due west, Princeton High School, Westminster Choir College. The conservatory is also not labeled on there, but is just west of the subject property. To the lower end of the image is the Princeton Downtown and Princeton University, also accessible, easily accessible by foot and by bicycle. And in the course of preparing for my testimony tonight, naturally, I visited the subject property and the neighborhood, and got familiar with the setting I'm evaluating for my planning analysis, and was really quite impressed with the juxtaposition of the subject property and the surrounding opportunities for education, employment, and shopping, all of which can be easily accessed on foot or bicycle, or of course, by vehicle, conveniently and easily from this location. More on that in a moment. But turning on to page two of exhibit A3 is a more close-up view of the subject property, which is consisting of two houses identified in the center of the image on page two as 162 and 166 Linden Lane. You can see that these homes are no different in their dimension or position or spatial arrangements from any of the other homes on the street, roughly doing what suburban development regulations say should be done, to build the houses one by one, set back from each other, set back from the street. What's really a takeaway for me from this particular image, though, is you will see Franklin Avenue, a bending road to the rear of the two structures we're talking about. 162 and 166 Linden Lane each have lots that are through lots. They will go from Linden Lane and touch the actual right-of-way of Franklin Avenue. We didn't make it that way, that's just the way it is. But it's noteworthy because this provides a very unique difference from a typical suburban, single-family detached lot in that this has two means of emergency access, two roadways to get to either of these properties, God forbid, should there be an emergency and that be needed. I think that's an important distinguishing characteristic of these lots over other lots that may be located along Linden Lane and elsewhere in the R8 district, which is the zoning district that applies to this property. I did look at the zoning ordinance and master plan for the community.
Without wishing to interrupt you, really, but if I look on the other side of Linden Lane, I see all of the properties on that side have access from either Ewing or Linden Lane. Does that make, are these different from the two houses you're discussing that go between Linden and Franklin? Is there some substantial difference?
That Ewing Street is not built.
I'm sorry?
That Ewing Street that is shown on the diagram is not built.
It doesn't show up on your diagram?
It's on my diagram.
Yeah.
But you can see that there?
But you were making a point, I thought, that the two Linden Lane properties went between Linden and Franklin, and that made them somehow special.
Mm-hmm.
But the properties on the other side of the street from them go between Linden and Ewing. And I'm wondering, because I don't understand your argument here, how they differ from the two you're discussing? They've both got access from two roads.
My apologies. You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Let me just back off of all that I said about the two?
Previous point you made?
Two points of emergency access, not terribly unique.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, page three of exhibit A3 shows three ground photos taken by myself during my visit last winter. This is not fresh snow, this is images from last winter, when I began my investigation of the property. Image three in the upper left shows the front of the subject building at 162 Linden Lane, looking to the west from Linden Lane. Image four on the upper right is the front view of the subject home at 166 Linden Lane, looking west. Image five is a view of bicycles I observed. Image three also shows a bicycle in front at 162 Linden Lane. Image six is simply showing the adjoining neighbor to the north, no particular significance to that photo, filling in the photomontage, more or less. So this provides for the setting for my analysis about these two still unique properties, and I say they're unique because they have the history of having served the community as three-family dwellings for the span of 15 to 20 years. And these properties are operational as two family dwellings. I had the opportunity to walk through with Ms. Bakshi through both of the structures early in my analysis, and saw that they provided decent apartments at all of the levels. But as you heard earlier, the removal of the basement apartments was done proactively by my client to eliminate any potential for life safety risks due to non-code compliance there. So we have now two family dwellings that exist and have existed, and the origin of those two apartments is not an item that can be pinned to a particular year, in my awareness. They have existed for some time, and by virtue of my inspection of the interior elements, I was not seeing new anything. The trim, the walls, finishes, et cetera, were not brand-new. These were not luxury units by any measure, nor were they dilapidated either. They were just average apartment units within these two structures. So the application morphed from its original constitution from the two, three-family dwellings to tonight, consideration of two family dwellings. And as the board knows, two-family dwellings are not a permitted use in the R8 district. The R8 district permits single-family dwellings, single-family dwellings with flats, and it also permits rumors under certain circumstances. But two-family uses, we agree, are clearly not permitted. So why should the board consider this application when it's not permitted? I will tell you that this property, these, I'll say this property in total, it really represents two side-by-side properties, represent an interesting and beneficial asset to the community in their current configuration, and actually in their former configuration as two three-family dwellings. Remember, I explained on page one of A3, the unique location of the subject property within an easy walk or easy bike to all of the destinations one could need for car-free living. That embodies smart growth principles very, very well. And for a planner, I don't think, we're moving backwards, we're moving actually to the future with this existing configuration that my client did not assemble but purchased, thinking it was legal. So there's the equity issue, we'll come to that in a moment. But the properties here serve this community with a housing resource. I was impressed with my review of the master plan, clearly wanting additional housing resources to touch down, but not to disturb the existing neighborhood character in doing so. This does that. This is there, this is not distinguishable from any other non-two-family home on the street by virtue of my visual inspection up and down the street. There are other rental properties there, but in fact, they're roughly one-third of the properties on the entirety of Linden Lane are not owner-occupied properties, according to the tax records I looked at. So this area rentals are common, and you can expect that rentals are probably largely by student population who utilize these rental resources as they attend to various schools in the area. I'm not saying universally it's all students, nor would it be limited to all students, but generally speaking, this is a nice setting for students to occupy reasonable and decent housing resources. So back to the point, the two homes here represent, I think, a housing resource that the community does not necessarily have to struggle with to sustain. It was established, it was not off the radar of the inspection community here over the years that it was visited by town officials, leaving my client to think that she had indeed a legitimate and compliant property. So the wrinkle came when it was revealed that, no, that's not actually technically the case. And we have, in the course of time that I've been involved with this project, we've seen a reduction of the use intensity by the removal of two of the apartments, one from each structure from the basement area. So we had a community asset that was, to my awareness, not a problem in the community. You know, a lot of my testimony in front of boards, particularly for use variances, concerns a prospective thing, something that's not there yet. And I am weighing in on whether it would be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood or to the zone plan or zoning ordinance prospectively. Here we have, as a matter of actual experience, not two, but three dwelling units in each building persisting in the community. And I'm not aware of police calls or fire calls to this property indicating in any way that these are problems in the neighborhood, further supporting my conclusion that these are indeed valuable housing resources to the greater community, not just the occupants, not just the owner, but the people who will have an employee live there, the schools who will have their students live there. That's what I mean by a community asset. And situated in such a way that these two dwellings are of a low-impact nature because of their particularly suitable location within the context of the surrounding community network that the occupants will interact with, as I explained earlier. So I find that this is a particularly suitable site for the proposed use by virtue of the context. It's situated in a residential area in which rentals are common. Both homes are situated in an ideal location where this type of use can be of value by providing, not as a matter of policy, but it just happened to happen that way, that there are four apartments here instead of two single-family dwellings today. These homes have actually provided much-needed housing, which, as I have said several times now, is a substantial benefit to the community. I believe that the condition is also, the condition of the properties, not just because they have these dwelling units in them already make them particularly suitable, but also the management of these properties has been outstanding, as far as I can tell. I find my client to be very conscientious, and she demonstrated that again by, on her own, having an inspection done and reacting immediately to eliminating an unsatisfactory, unwise arrangement of the two basement apartments, that is. I believe that there are special reasons for granting the requested relief through congruency with several of the purposes of the municipal land use law, starting with purpose A, which is promotion of the general welfare. This existing housing promotes the general welfare by providing decent and safe housing within walking distance of the university, other schools, employment, and shopping. Again, it embodies all of the smart growth principles that newer development is orienting to. When I say newer, I mean a break from the model of traditional suburban development where you have higher densities, where that higher density can not only be accommodated, but also be integrated within its surroundings without negative impact. Purpose G is also advanced. Purpose G is providing for a variety of uses in appropriate locations to meet the needs of the state's residents. With the student population coming and going through the community as a matter of design, we're indeed talking about the state's residents being served by these additional housing resources being available. And I reiterate again, I don't mean to beat a dead horse. This is an ideal location for this type of unusual situation to be approved, simply because of the context, simply because of the particular suitability, but also, I'll continue with the special reasons. Purpose H is well-promoted. Purpose H, the land use law seeks to promote the free flow of traffic. What better way than to provide for realistic opportunities for car-free living in the heart of such a vibrant community that needs such housing as Princeton? Purpose I is advanced. Purpose I promotes, is the promotion of a desirable visual environment. We are proposing absolutely no disturbance to the exterior, to the grounds, to anything that one might see from a surrounding property or passerby. So non-visual disturbance of the character of the neighborhood is marching very closely with the intent of the master plan to not disturb existing neighborhood character. And finally, purpose M is promoted, which is promotion of the efficient use of land. What better way to make the use of a rare resource by taking advantage, really, of a situation that, again, is unique and not intended to be a disruption of the zoning scheme by my client, but, again, she thought she was buying something that had already been vetted and approved by the municipality. As to the negative criteria, does any, I did not see any way to find that there's a substantial detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. For one, there is no visual impact to no disturbance on the exterior, there is no substantially, no substantial safety impacts. In other words, traffic, security, or fire, parking demand is met by virtue of the, actually the reduced demand on the site, going down from three units to two reduces the actual demand. But we have two driveways here, one on each property, at least 80, both are at least 80 feet in length per my measurement from the shrub line, not from the actual edge of this Linden Lane pavement, but pulling back a few feet to start at the shrub line, 80 feet in will support, in my experience, easily for parked vehicles, because this is not any longer a multifamily, by definition, type of land use. It does not trip any of the requirements for group parking facilities that... It does not trip any of the requirements for group parking facilities that multifamily development typically has. One-in-two-family dwellings are commonly outfitted with their own parking in tandem fashion in a single wide driveway throughout the community and many other communities in New Jersey. There is, so there are four, at least four parking spaces on each property. Two spaces per dwelling unit yields a requirement of four, so in my opinion, I do not believe the parking deficiency exists at all. There is no substantial health impacts in terms of air or water pollution or solid waste from this proposal, no substantial welfare impacts, no exceptional noise or light pollution or visual impacts that I could tell, no alteration of the character of the area. Both dwellings will continue to look just like any other single-family dwelling, no extra meters, no extra mailboxes. And of course, the owner's commitment to proper maintenance of the structures and landscaping has been demonstrated over time, and I expect that will continue. As far as the relationship of this application to the municipality's zone plan and zoning ordinance, master plan and zoning ordinance, I first want to identify that this is a specific piece of property because it carries with it this history of multiple units in each of these properties. So we're not talking about something that's tantamount to a rezone of the R8 district. It's a very discreet portion of the entire zone with specific properties on them. The master plan seeks to protect the character of residential neighborhoods. This application fully honors that without a single change to the exterior. And again, if there has been no problem with the property, we have a winner here. There has been occupancy of this property in this neighborhood for many, many years and for the problem, for no problems to have erupted, I think that's testimonial to a good fit. And, you know, add that to the other reasons I've been talking about. Finally, this board, this particular board has more detailed information than the governing body ever will when it considers zoning regulations, and it can add conditions as it deems appropriate. So I don't think there's any consistency with the intent of the zoning ordinance and master plan, à la the Medici analysis. I can talk to any, Mr. Bridger, I don't know if you were going to weigh in as to your opinion about the parking situation there. Maybe it would be appropriate for you to do so before I wrap up my testimony. Are you okay with doing that?
I would just, I think in my memo I noted there were parking setbacks that I don't know if-
Was that on the multifamily design or-
No, because multifamily is not permitted, so a single-family, I was applying the single-family requirements. Hold on a second.
Perhaps while we're waiting, you could give me your opinion as a professional planner as to why the ordinance, which says single-family dwellings, is in place for this area, and why that ordinance also recognizes the desirability, perhaps, of having an apartment in such a house, but there has to be the owner in residence. Neither of these houses that you're talking about will have an owner in residence, if I understand the situation.
Right.
But planning and zoning has said that this is desirable. Can you give me your professional opinion about that?
I'll give you the short version, Mr. Chairman, simply that if this was a proposal from scratch, in other words, if these buildings-
Well, life is always from scratch.
-did not exist in their current configuration, we might have a different discussion here. But because they are there, and my client, in good faith, purchased these expecting that she was doing something correct and aboveboard, only to find out years later that it is not so, despite diligent efforts on her part to follow the law, every letter of the law, we have a very unique situation that I will never expect to see written into a zoning code. Totally unique situation, unexpected in so many ways that this evolved to what it is today. On the basis of finding an acceptable middle ground between that history and the equity of the matter and the board's role in preserving the purposes of planning and the master plan, there needs to be a balance struck, because it's not an all-or-nothing proposition on any side of those discussions.
I understand what you're saying. But another thing the board has to take care of is setting an exception which then everyone else in the neighborhood can use.
I doubt that-
And so if we say, well, these houses can have two apartments in them, then the next-door neighbor and the next-door neighbor, and the person on the other side of the street may decide they would like to do that.
I believe there's enough material, I've been with this application from the beginning, enough material on the record to distinguish these properties as different from the usual situation, and I would say the board would not be challenged to look at another property that didn't have this history in the same way that it would be looking at-
But it's not evident that the history of this place has been a legal history. It's something that happened and wasn't caught, one might say, until an application was made to this board.
Well, I don't think it's fair to characterize it as wasn't caught. This was done under the light of-
It's a non-approved use.
Under the light of day, with town officials coming and going to observe what's on the ground for many years. And I think that is not anyone's fault, I'm not pointing any fingers, but I'm saying it happened. It's real. It's tangible.
No, I understand real.
It is a material situation that needs to be given fair treatment, by, I think, by this board and anyone else who might consider this matter. It calls out for some sort of fair resolution.
Is it even for this board to hear this? I mean, we're here to basically interpret the zoning ordinance, and this clearly doesn't comply. 162 was never approved as anything other than a single-family home. In 1974, 166 was granted a flat on the second floor, and I don't, other than, other than the stipulation that one of the two units needed to be owner-occupied, that was the extent of the restriction, as I understand it. And now we're being asked to retroactively come back and approve two units in each one, where the, I won't say legally, but the one that at least had a flat permit would not be occupied by the owner. Is that really, I mean, we're, you know, that, is that really a zoning issue?
Very much so, and this is the board to adjudicate that very question.
Well, I mean, it doesn't comply with the ordinance, and-
That's why we're here.
And, thank you. And there's no compelling reason why this house would be more adaptable to that or acceptable to that than any houses in the neighborhood. I just don't, I just don't understand.
But for the history of getting us to this point today.
It's just history. I understand that. But again, I don't feel, from our standpoint, that, that we can really address the history other than the compliance with the ordinance.
But if all you did was assure compliance, you would be an enforcement agency, not an adjudicatory agency. I understand that the role of this board and other zoning boards of adjustment are to hear and act on applications that don't, on their face, comply with the rules, which brings them before you for considering the finer points of the application. And I'm trying to underscore that this property has those finer points that are worthy of due consideration outside of a random piece of property where you were presented with a proposal to build something not allowed. This is, this is different from that situation.
If you were to come before us with two single-family houses and ask us to allow the construction of a second unit or for the unit to be, the house to be considered for secondary residence, that's something that we have criteria to, to review.
Yes, indeed.
But what you're asking us for is, is something totally different than that.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Because of, because of its history, it is. Substantially different than a development proposal to propose something that's not there yet in this fashion.
But the ordinance, again, unless I'm wrong, Karen, the ordinance doesn't speak to history.
Actually, I was going to ask Mr. Pesolano, oops, into my question. Mr. Pesolano, my understanding of your testimony is that you're relying heavily on what you call the equity of the situation. Would that be fair?
No, it's one of the legs of my platform, but not relying solely or even in a major way on that part of it.
Okay, because my understanding from the staff memo is that, I understand that Mrs. Box, she's testified that when she purchased these properties, she believed, well, I'll take that back, that when they were changed to three residential units, because when she purchased them, that was not their use, but that when, when she changed the use, she thought it was legal. But you must acknowledge that no permits were applied for, no certificate of occupancy. So yes, there were inspections by rental housing staff, but, and you were not here, I believe, for previous comments that were made by the rental housing staff, who are here again tonight, but that those inspections, they're not zoning officers. They were there to inspect, should we say, did it comply with certain standards. So if I heard you incorrectly, then I guess my next question is, you've testified that the site suitability here is because it's convenience to everything, to, I think you said, employment and shopping and education. Wouldn't that be true, though, if it were a single-family house? If I were to rent the single-family house out, I would, if I were the real estate agent, I'd say it's close to everything. It's great.
It's suitable because of the context and the condition of the property, and that's what ties the history to the present discussion, in my view. You may not see it that way.
Right.
The board might not see it that way, but that's certainly how I evaluate this application, having such merit.
So would it be your position, then, if there were other properties in single-family zones where somebody had apartments that were not approved, and then it was determined that those apartments are there, they could make the same argument that there's a history that the owner thought it was legal? I'm, I guess I'm trying to get to the, the standard for granting the use variance. I know we haven't talked about parking, and I don't know if it needs parking or not, but, and I think that ties in with the questions that you're hearing from the board. Now, there is a standard that needs to be met, and I guess that's the question.
I am addressing that stand, have addressed that standard in my testimony to point out that I find it a particularly suitable site, that it, that there are special reasons under the municipal land use law for granting this relief, and the negative criteria are clearly satisfied, in my opinion, as well as the Medici analysis. So those proofs point me to a conclusion that the board could get behind to bring about a reasonable conclusion to this matter and have it be something everyone can live with. And I say that in all sincerity. I'm not trying to squeeze into a smaller container something that shouldn't be there. I'm trying to find my way through this unique history, reconcile that with the zoning imperatives that are on the ground for every piece of property, and find that this either fits or it doesn't, and my analysis points me to, clearly to the conclusion that it is a good fit without detriment to any of the planning purposes that might be violated by other applications proposing two-two-family dwellings next to each other. This does not do that. This is very consistent with not only planning principles but of the community in terms of providing reasonable, realistic housing resources, but also smart growth in a very tidy package.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
It must be in here somewhere, but I can't find it. When, when did the current owner buy this prop, these properties?
I'm not going to misspeak on that date.
Ms. Box, she's been sworn to, you don't mind, we can have her answer that question.
May I answer that question, please?
Sure.
All right. 166 Linden Lane was purchased in 1993, and as you can see from the documents which I had submitted when I testified, there were no changes made to the properties. The properties were as they were marketed, and they were marketed as multifamily properties. In 2001, 162 was purchased.
Thank you.
And, and why is it, this just leaves kind of questions in my mind. Why is it that there are so many instances of inspectors not being able to get in to, take a look at the property?
Yeah, okay, so I think you had asked this question at the last meeting as well, and I did not get an opportunity to respond to you. The inspectors have always made an appointment, and I've always made myself available to walk, you know, through the properties with them. The appraisers may have come without information or without intimation, and the tenants may have sent them away, but there was never, there was never, ever, an occasion when an inspector wanted to go through the house and we did not make the house available. So I think there is a little discrepancy between an appraiser trying to walk through versus an inspector trying to walk through.
When you, when you purchased these, either in 92 or 2001, you said they were multifamily, but how many units were in each one?
I'm sorry, could you-
How many units were in each house in 162 and 166 when you purchased them?
They both had three units when we purchased the properties, and, and-
I believe Mr. Pesolano misspoke on that. They had three units when they were purchased.
Yeah, and that's what I had submitted in my very original testimony, that the properties were marketed as multifamily, the part, the properties were purchased as multifamily, and we retained them as multifamily. And may I take exception, they were not illegal, Mr. Royce. In my opinion, and again, I am no expert, I have to say that, that I was an honest, innocent buyer, and I did not know the difference between zonings and variances. I don't know the nuances of those things, and I'm learning them as I'm going through the process. We approached the township and asked them if we could rent the properties, and we were for 20 years given rental housing approvals. Now, I had no way of knowing that there was a zoning requirement related to these. I mean, I'm not a developer, I'm not a builder, I'm not a real estate agent, I'm an anecdotal individual who lives in the community, and that was, I mean, I would never do anything illegally, and Mr. Pesola, sorry, Mr. Alfredo said, "The moment I found out that they were, that there could be, you know, life safety issues with this, I moved to immediately vacate those apartments. I will never be on the wrong side of the law." So please forgive me, but I have not done anything illegal, Mr. Royce.
Can you tell me how many people live in each one of the apartments now?
How many people live in the apartments right now?
Yes.
Without the basement apartments?
Yes.
So there's three people who live on the first floor and three people who live on the second floor in 162 Linden Lane, and there are two people each on 166 Linden Lane.
And does each person have a separate contract with you?
No, they have one con, they come as a unit.
So it is a family that's living?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Wickstead, I have a question, perhaps this will be helpful to the board. In Mr. Bridger's memo, he summarizes housing inspections for 162 and 166, and I'm looking at page three-
Okay.
...of his memo, which was dated January 5, 2017, revised March 23, 2017. And he indicates for 162 from 1999 to 2004, records indicate these rental housing-
records indicate these rental housing inspections identified them as one unit with six bedrooms. Now, Mrs. Bakshi indicates she bought the building in 2001, it was being used then as three apartments. Then subsequently, 2007 to 2014, these inspections changed, and now records show inspectors are seeing three units. But there's an overlap there. So, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, and it's the same thing with 166, was purchased in 1993, inspections from 2005 until 2015 showed two units. But again, Mrs. Bakshi's testimony is there were three units. So, I...
May I clarify that for you? Sure, okay. So, then the rental housing department used to come through the properties, they would ask us to file one application, and they would approve it as one house, as like one unit, right? And then in 2007, they came out and they said, "Please apply for three units." And they asked us to put in three applications, which I did. And at that point, they came in, and if you can look through the COs, which are attached to the application, they gave three rental unit approvals. So I was asked by the township to do that, and I followed through on the township's requirements.
Well, first of all, just to clarify, I see what you're talking about in terms of attachments, but there are no certificates of occupancy for these units. This is apparently a document that was issued by the former township for a rental inspection. That's not a certificate of occupancy, which can only be issued by the construction official, but I...
Well, I mean, I'm looking at certificates of compliance that are issued by Mr. John Pettenati, if I'm pronouncing it. It says "construction official," so I agree with you, it's not entitled to certificate of occupancy, it's not on the, you know, it's not on the state form, but I mean, it is, it was a document issued by the construction official.
Okay, well, let me do this.
And I remember we had that testimony, I think, back in June, if we want to have it again, we can, but I know that, you know, that there was some discussion that, you know, these are not, you know, a CO on the UCC form.
Well, perhaps it would be helpful, since we have the rental housing inspectors here tonight, if one of them could clarify, my understanding is, in the former township, the inspections were done, or the rental housing unit was within the construction department. So that's my understanding, and that's why they appear as they do, but, Chip, do you want to come up and give us some input?
Good evening, Charles Sugg, Princeton Rental Housing Official. This starts, I'm sorry, Karen, would you like me to swear?
Absolutely, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
My office took over the rental program in November of 2014, and we took over the township properties along with absorbing the entire municipality. Inspector Ron Delapo did an inspection back in July of 2015, and with several red flags that did show up during the course of the inspection, we went back and investigated this a little further. We did determine, after talking to zoning official Derek Bridger, that the one property was a two-family flat, meaning that the owner had to live in one of them and rent out the other one, and the other property was just a single-family dwelling. Inspector Delapo took measurements of the property spaces, made notes, and we determined that there was three non-owner occupied rental properties within the space, and this is what generated the entire case here today.
And that was in 2015?
July 2015.
And Mr. Sugg, these rental housing inspection certificates of compliance, which were issued by the former township, is it your understanding that these are certificates of occupancy?
No, they're just certificates of inspection based on what was there. They did not delve into what was approved in the space, they just went and looked in this property and found that there was no deficiencies under the rental housing code itself. But again, with the discrepancies that we found in the records, that it went from a one-family house in 2007, I believe it was, and then the next inspection showed that there was three. So I asked Inspector Delapo to go through the construction records to find out if there was any permits for any additional bathrooms, kitchens, plumbing, electrical, and there was none. And that is also for the same, the other property we're talking about. There was no additional permits taken out for any of the work that was done in the property.
Well, we can agree, then, that the certificates of inspection, I guess, or certificates of compliance, Ms. Casey, that you were just questioning about, the ones, you know, with one versus two versus three, were not, you know, were not issued or not under the purview of the current office, correct? Okay. So, you know, I think that my client's testimony was that, you know, she was, you know, not following instructions, she was instead, she was, you know, doing what was, you know, requested in accordance with her discussions with the official at that time. Mr. Sugg, would it be fair to say, then, that if rental housing, when they were conducting an inspection, determined, what would be a situation where they would report something to the construction code official?
I can't speak, I can't speak for the other past inspectors that did the inspection. In my office, we would note the normal multiple-family dwelling code, which is basically a housekeeping code for the state of New Jersey. It would be the maintenance of smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, the general maintenance of the property, broken windows, dripping faucets, obvious leaks, mold, safe egress from the property in and out, and that sort of thing.
Would you look to see if there was a kitchen?
Yes.
Would you look to see if there was a bathroom?
Yes.
Would you look to see if there was a bed?
Correct, yes.
So, these would be, would you agree that those would be items that would be, you know, required if a certificate of occupancy would be issued?
I cannot speak for what the, again, this would be for the use, current use of what was in there, and this was found in the property. It would be a bathroom, a kitchen, and a habitable space within each unit.
No, I understand, I understand, thank you for clarification. I guess my question is, is that what would be a situation where your office would report something to the construction code official and say, "Hey, you need to go check this out, something's rotten and done wrong."
This did generate a referral to the construction official, and it was basically sent back over to the zoning office, and a referral was made over to Derek, and this is what, again, brought up, because we had to start out with, well, we can't issue a certificate of occupancy to a three-family house if a three-family house is not permitted in this particular space or in this building or whatever. It all has to start back at the zoning officer for approval for the use of the building.
Thank you. So, I mean, so is it fair to say, then, that there are at least some elements of your inspection that would overlap with a CO, a certificate of occupancy inspection?
I apologize, I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Are there things that you would be looking for, would be the same thing, in your opinion, if you know what a construction code official would be looking for for a certificate of occupancy inspection?
I apologize.
When you come in in rental housing inspection, and you take stock of certain items, you know, things that you just went through, if you know, is there any overlap in what you're looking for as to what the construction code official would be looking for to issue a CO?
Well, the construction official during his inspections would have a clear observation of what's behind the walls, or the plumbing, or the electrical. He would have more inspectors do, you know, the plans of what's there. So he has more, I'm, again, more of a housekeeping code, where that what's there has to be maintained, what I can visually see, and what I can visually, you know, turn a faucet on to make sure we have adequate water, that it's properly draining, that the electrical outlets are working, that when I flip a switch, the lights are working. If something's not working, it goes on my violation notice saying, "It's not working, fix it."
Okay. And your office is located where in the municipal building?
I'm located in the original borough, 1 Monument Drive, and the construction office is located here in 400 Witherspoon Street.
Okay. Do they share staff, or is it just a completely independent staff?
Complete independent staff.
Okay. Would you say that the two offices at least have a, you know, a daily interaction or communication, or would that be?
We do communicate, yes.
But the, excuse me, correct me if I'm wrong, the construction office really reviews an apartment or a home at the time of initial occupancy, or some sort of building permit that would generate a review by the building department. After that time, then your office makes sure that after something is approved for construction, whether a renovation or new construction, you're basically charged with making sure these are operated in a decent, safe, and sanitary fashion.
Correct.
Right, not necessarily in conjunction with the building department. You take off, you start your work after the building department completes their work.
Correct. What we would do is we would generate a certificate of rental, a certificate of rental registration for a new property, and then after two years, we would solicit the homeowner and say, "It's been two years, it's time for us to come in and do another inspection." So it's a two-year cycle that we come in and do known rental properties in town.
Okay, yeah.
This, and I'm sorry, this is only for one and two-family dwellings. The state of New Jersey maintains the multiple-family dwellings, three or more units.
Which they, yeah, they had come out and had approved, so that's, you know...
There are people in the audience who wish to speak to this case, and I think it could be useful to the board, rather than going around saying, we've heard several times, to hear what they have to say.
Well, I think, yeah, I agree with you, but I just want to make sure that everything that the applicant has to present, you know, we have, and then, then, I mean, obviously, the people in the audience can definitely speak, and we want them to speak, but I want to make sure that we have all the facts that they want to present before we bring the audience in.
Yes, well, it's not, I thought we had gotten those, but I think we should be sure.
If you're done, then we can do that.
And they can always come back, of course, before we make a decision.
I still have a few more remarks to make before concluding, if the board is ready, but...
Talk into the microphone so that we can hear you better.
Sorry, I still have a few more comments to make to conclude my testimony. If the board is ready for that, but we sort of segued when I...
Don't waste time.
When I asked Mr. Bridger about the parking aspects, so that we could address that.
There's a 25-foot front yard parking setback, and then there's an 8-foot side yard parking setback. It appears as these properties were developed as single-family homes, it was probably prior to the parking setback ordinance being established, because there was no variance on the original COs of these properties. So I would say to convert it to anything other than a single-family use where the existing parking is, you would need setback variances for the parking, and nine-by-19 spaces with a 25-foot setback, it appears you would need about four spaces for each property, so you can't really fit the four in the driveway with a 25-foot setback, and that both driveways are right on the property line in the 8-foot setback, so they would need variances for each dwelling, two, four spaces each.
Four spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to weigh in on the relief Mr. Bridger just identified, then. I think that that relief can be subsumed within the D1 variance request, generally speaking, but to be specific to the points, there are specific benefits of this application, benefits to the community, as I described, that will carry forth into consideration of the bulk relief, the C variance relief that Mr. Bridger just identified. So the positive criteria are addressed through that merging of the use benefits with the C relief. I find that pursuant to the flexible C, commonly known as the C2 analysis, that if the application is found to be a suitable location for the proposed use, certainly the facilities to go along with it make for an appropriate match. Secondly, this property really doesn't differ, in any way that I'm aware of, from any of the neighboring properties in terms of the driveway configuration, all of them hugging the lot line, all of them probably hosting vehicles closer than 25 feet to the street at some time. So, I don't see a substantial deviation here with the configuration not being an exact match for the regulations Mr. Bridger cited. This is, again, a specific piece of property with the two-family dwellings currently existing on it. As I stated in the use analysis, there's no negative impact to the neighborhood, but from a practical matter, since we're talking about parking, the purposes of the regulations for the community relative to parking are to make sure that adequate parking is provided, and adequate, in this context, is more squarely centered on the number of spaces, and since the number of spaces is covered, the deviation from the distances would not be commonly found anywhere along this street, in my awareness. Thus, it's not representing an extreme aberration from the streetscape and the spatial arrangements that exist on it. We also have to include in the analysis that parking here is a technical requirement, not a practical one, so much because of the proximity of walkability and bikeability to all of the car-free destinations one who doesn't have a car would want to be close to.
Mr. Pesolano, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just had an opportunity, I just wanted, for the pleasure of the board, the testimony from the applicant back in June, and we can restate it now, but, you know, that there are presently two cars parking, you know, only two cars with tenants at 162 Linden, and one car with a tenant at 166 Linden. We would be agreeable to a condition limiting whatever the board determines is reasonable under the circumstances. And I understand there's members of the audience that are going to likely weigh in on, you know, what they believe is a parking issue. But we would agree to a condition of approval limiting, you know, the number of, you know, cars, you know, to two at each location, which would not require a variance. How would we enforce that? We would enforce it two ways. One, we would make it a condition of our lease that the tenants abide by, or it would be an immediate default. There is case law that speaks about, in terms of, you know, managing conditions and, you know, applicants' conditions, and it's, you know, basically a function of, you know, sound municipal government and, you know, keen neighbors. So if there's a parking issue attributable to our tenants, we assume that that would be reported. The second, and I think this is a more global item, would be if the board is inclined to grant an approval, the applicant would be willing to record a resolution, to record the resolution in the public records, so that while those are not regularly indexed, you know, or they're not recorded, ours would be recorded against the property, so anybody who would be interested in knowing what our resolution stated wouldn't have to file an open request, they could pull it up online. But I think, like, I didn't know if you had anything else to add to your conclusion, but I just wanted to, I wanted to propose that to the board, because I know that Ms. Bakshi, you know, understands, you know, from her perspective, you know, we have tenants here that ride bikes, they walk to class, only three in two of the properties actually have cars.
Okay, and that's my understanding, that there's a light demand from those properties. I also want to add that the negative criteria are satisfied under both the C2 and the C1 analysis. The C1 analysis is satisfied because of the existing structures and configuration on the property. The parking is where it is, and the locations of the homes will prohibit an 8-foot setback from touching down there and not be in the front yard. So I think it's appropriate to consider relief under C1 and C2 being appropriate here. In either case, not a substantial impact to the... either case, not a substantial impact to the neighborhood, in my opinion, and not taking away from the purposes of parking regulations in the community's regulations.
Is that done with parking?
I think, yes. So I think at this point.
In sum, I find that the application is consistent with good planning principles for orderly community development. It strikes an equitable balance of the interests involved, and the statutory tests are met, and the application warrants approval. I do want to note that to remove the two-family occupancies, in my opinion, would remove the benefits the community as a whole has enjoyed from having these critically important housing resources. On balance, to me, removing two more units from the inventory of available rentals would not advance the purposes of planning and zoning in Princeton as much as retaining them. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. At that point, that concludes our testimony, though we reserve the right to respond to any members of the public, so if you want to call the members.
I think we'll have members of the public.
Fair enough, thank you.
And then you can make a thing. Sir, I see at least one member of the public who wishes to say something. You've seen the ritual, you have to tell us who you are, swear to be truthful, and then we will listen.
Okay. My name is Nancy Silverberg, and I have to
And where do you live, Mrs. Silverberg?
I'm sorry.
What's your address?
I live at 152 Linden Lane, which on your Princeton tax maps is 158, directly next door to 162.
All right. Now, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Okay, I am providing testimony on behalf of myself and my husband, Paul Silverberg, as the owners of 152, and also called 158, Linden Lane. Our residence is immediately next door to the east of the subject property at 162 Linden Lane. I have resided at this address for the past 25 years, and my husband for 27. With his apologies, my husband cannot be present as well at this meeting due to business, travel obligations, he's in the Virgin Islands, he'll be back tomorrow. He has attended the previous meetings that got canceled for different reasons. The chairman stated something at the July 26 meeting that resonated with both of us and went to the heart of our concerns as immediate neighbors. The fundamental premise within the R8 zoning is that the owner is in residence. There may be variations within that, but implicit is that an owner is present on the premises on a daily basis, and thereby brings an owner's sensibility and responsibility to caring for and managing a property. Quite simply, individual rental tenants do not bring the same sense of responsibility and ownership, and this has led to the ongoing issues we have experienced for many years regarding the 162 Linden property. These issues revolve around parking, trash, and nighttime activities. The severity and frequency of these issues has fluctuated, given each particular mix of tenants, but there has always been present in one form or another, and an intermittent visit by the owner to check the property has never successfully resolved any of them. Parking, the tenants do consistently have their own vehicles, not just sub bicycles, as the applicant indicated. They also have friends who have cars. The parking issues arise less on a normal day-to-day basis, but more on snow emergency days, when the vehicles need to be removed from the street to facilitate plowing. There is a lot of on-street parking, because it's a single-file driveway, so they don't want to block each other. More often than not, they are not moved into the 162 driveway and are left on the street, plowed in, and then the street becomes dysfunctional until most of the snow melts. This scenario has been repeated over and over through the many years. We know that the 162 tenants firsthand are doing it, because we have lent our snow shovels to them on many occasions to help them dig their cars out, as watching them use their bare hands or the likes of a garden spade is simply too pitiful to watch. It's a lot of 20-something people, and they don't have any of this equipment. Trash, a current example. After the recent snowfall on January 4th, a trash can from 162 was moved onto our front lawn, which is consistent, presumably because their driveway was cleared. The trash can, and by the way, they have multiple trash cans and multiple recycle bins. I always thought there were 15 people over there, but I think they have a lot of people coming in and out of there. The trash can was left on our front lawn for eight days, which is normal, until it was blown over by the high winds on January 12, spilling its contents all over our lawn. They don't use real garbage bags, they just use the little plastic shopping bags, and they don't even close them, so the garbage just spills everywhere. My husband was angry, because I immediately cleaned it up before he could get a picture, but if I don't, it just goes all over, everywhere. He took a picture of the garbage can on the lawn, and then he wanted it, you know, when it spilled all over, I had cleaned it up already. There is no ownership of this issue whatsoever by the tenants, no responsibility shown to pick up trash, no intervention by the owner. The same scenario, picking up trash, winding up on our property, and emanating from 162 tenants, has been repeated too many times over the years. We are simply and terribly wary from it. Nighttime activities, this has been less frequent occurrence, but when the weather has turned warm, there has been noisy late-night gatherings amongst the tenants and their friends on the back porch of the house. Some of these have been late enough that they disturb our sleep, necessitating that we get up, shut our windows, turn our air conditioning on. I think I only called the police twice in 25 years, and when they cruised by the street, the loud music stopped. There was probably two or three in the morning, weeknights. Again, this would be less likely to occur if an owner was in residence. The applicant stated that nobody ever complained to her about the multi-tenant conditions at these properties. We have been complaining. At least 10 years ago, I received a notice that a registered child molester was living next door at 152 Linden Lane. I had two small children at the time. I installed a higher fence, but for many years, I never felt comfortable letting my children play in their own backyard. It should be noted that we have complained directly about the trash issues. I have lived on Linden Lane 25 years, and my husband has been on the actual street for 34 years. It's a quiet, genteel, live-and-let-live kind of neighborhood, but that does not mean that we condone or agree with the multi-tenant conditions that have been imposed upon us for the longest time. Nobody wants to live next to a frat house. And given this opportunity, we would like the board to be aware of this. We are also aware that we are making this statement on behalf of other neighbors that have, that are here tonight, that are in agreement with us, and have asked us to articulate their same sentiments. We appreciate the board's consideration of our position. Thank you. Nancy and Paul Silverberg. I have some photos, I don't know how helpful they are, but one is of snow-covered cars, you can't see their license plates, but we know whose they were, garbage on our lawn, and I can't remember, there's another one.
Thank you.
Mrs. Silverberg, you took these photos, is that correct? Your husband did, okay.
You took these photographs, or?
All right, well, we'll consider these objective one, two, and three, and then I'll give them to you if you want to see them, Mr..
Are there other people who wish to, would you come forward then, and we'll try and progress?
Sir, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, 155 Linden Lane.
And your name?
Xing Liu, L-I-U.
And Mr. Yu, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I live across from Nancy, 152, 155, across from 152.
Could you speak into the microphone?
And I have been living Linden Lane for 35 years. Thank you. And if you walk or drive from Nassau Street to the, to Westworld to Linden Lane, we are located in the end section of Linden Lane. It does mean all Tangship side. So before Franklin Avenue is a borough side, they are established, both sides have parking and sewer line, everything perfect, like a city park. But this section we live is not. It has only one side, right side, the only shopping center, North Hardeston side, the only this side has a sidewalk and parking allowed. Then the other side, that means middle school side, no parking, no curb. Okay, so those are house owners, or their friends, they come to this section of Linden Lane, they have a square parking to, this is, the one side parking only. Like, if I do the shopping, I'm going to park in front of my house, then it permit too much, they occupy the square space. I cannot load my grocery, my friend come to my house, they cannot park in front of my house, because there's so many cars, both sides of a house owner and friend, they have a square on this one side parking. And that's really damage our daily life, it's not convenient, we pay the tax. Now, those non-pay taxpayers, they use the public space as a, or their own easy purpose. And the, and the other side, what's the other, every time it's snowing day, public service of Princeton government have a courtesy to call each homeowner, remove, remove your car from the street, so that they can power, clean the street. But those tenants, they didn't remove it, though if you granted the permit, parking permit on the street, then better high possibility, in front of my street is not clean. That's really a disaster, and the street condition is not so great at the former parts of Linden Lane. And the outside, we, I have been here so long, then Tangship, engineer, they never tried to improve the condition of this section, and no sewer line, no curb, that's really ridiculous. And the other side is a public school area, then I saw, I always thinking Franklin Avenue, Franklin Avenue, they just repaint sidewalk, everything, and the other side of the block, they all done the street, and those of Giro Avenue, near the school, they already established it. Then you follow the various law, that reason that they repair, but this section of the Linden Lane is ignored, nobody care. That's really unfair for the people, because every time people running, so no pit hole in between, so all the water, debris, all the way flow to the Franklin, that intercross intersection area, debris and the mud, we have to clean up, we have to see the water running on both sides of the street, and the sidewalk, sidewalk, all the street volume go to Franklin Avenue to get out. And now the car parking permit, they want to flood our, that's really a muse, our residential area, it's not fair. If there is a parking law needed, then owner has to improve the parking space in their own yard, or do something else, instead of chip the parking space, or public space. Thank you, let me speak.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make any comments? No? Okay. So, let us try and, can you make a very quick summary of your position, before the board goes into executive session?
Be certain, glad to, thank you. I want to thank the board for its attention, I know that this has not been an easy matter, it's got a lot of history, which predates many, if not all, of us. At this point, we, my client believes, you know, that it has acted in good faith, believes that it has, you know, tried to minimize the impact, and as a result, you know, reduced from three occupancies to the two by eliminating the basement. Certainly willing to work with this board, as the testimony has shown, this is not a circumstance which I think my client ever wanted to be in. She's not a professional landlord, she's not a professional applicant before land use boards. She's a citizen that bought a home for rental property and thought she was doing the right thing, thought she was following the advice of officials, and we are where we are. The applicants testified that, you know, this, you know, that she is willing to agree to certain conditions of the approval. We spoke about the parking, we've heard, you know, we appreciate the testimony from the public. It's, parking is, in my experience as a land use attorney and real estate attorney, parking is always a very difficult thing, because we can't always control who drives to our, to where we are. What we can control as a landlord is, you know, which, you know, which tenants are allowed to have vehicles and how many. We would condition our approval based upon, you know, satisfactory working with the construction code official and rental housing, to address the issues that were raised by our architect's letter. We would condition the approval on the limitation of parking spaces. We would agree to a condition of approval, that it would be maintained only as two-family homes. We would agree to record a copy of this resolution, if granted an approval, in the public records, or memorandum, or whatever other mechanism that Ms. Casey believes would be necessary to protect the board, and to ensure that the determination of the board is adhered And lastly, we're not, while we are articulating that we believe we've met the proofs for the grant of a D1 use variance, you know, satisfying the positive and negative criteria, we would agree to limit the duration of the variance for a period of, you know, I guess of four years through the end of 2022, which was what Mrs. Bakshi had stated in her June testimony. I think that the board, and hearing the comments of the board, there's a concern that what about the next neighbor, what about the next neighbor? If you listen to the testimony of our planner, you would see that we're talking about, we're not looking prospectively, what might the next person do, we're looking at the conditions that are upon us, like them or not, this is, you know, these are the conditions that we've, you know, that This is, you know, these are the conditions that we've, you know, that, that we've, we've shown can be met, you know, with, you know, you know, with certain concessions by the applicant. So, um, and, and that is, in my opinion, something that is legitimate under the land use law. And it was, it would be a condition that we would agree to. And the last thing I would say is I just thank you for the board, for your time. I know that we're running late. I don't know what your normal stopgap time is, but we appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we're in executive session.
I'm sorry, can I ask one quick question?
Absolutely.
Just to clarify, the parking related condition that you said you would agree to, you said, you said you agree to limiting the parking spaces. Are you in fact, or even can you actually limit the number of cars that people have? Because if, if you, if you only limit the number of spaces, it seems like it might exacerbate the street parking problem.
If I misspoke, I apologize. What I meant by that is we would limit the number of vehicles that our tenants could have. In other words, we would only rent to tenants and in the lease you can provide a provision that says, you know, the tenants are not allowed more than two vehicles. You're not allowed to park two vehicles permanently at the property. I don't know if it would even be enforceable, and I really don't want to go down that path of saying in a, in a, in a lease, in a residential lease, that could be before, you know, the judge in landlord tenant court as to, you know, you can't have people over at a certain time. You know, it would be something we could certainly suggest to our tenants, but it would be a very difficult thing to regulate, even if we were there full time.
Thank you, I think we understood.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to start the discussion?
What's different from the last time we talked about this? Can we try to summarize that? There are two less apartments.
There are two less apartments, so there's not that, but...
So that's different.
The, the two that are proposed are not permitted by zoning. And I think that we have to worry about setting a precedent and then everyone in principle can come and say this. It seems to me that there's not a, a large number of rental houses available in Princeton, and it has a transient population that for a year or so may wish to have a whole house rather than an apartment. And so to have two single-family houses, that are rentable is not an unreasonable thing in a Princeton environment. If an owner is to live in one of them, then you can have that plus, as of right, an apartment associated with the right. So I don't think we need to worry particularly, I think we must be considerate, but I don't think we need to worry particularly about depriving somebody of an income source by saying what has happened in the past has been illegal. You've come and asked for variance and we as a board think it is one way or the other, whatever we think is the ball. Because I think there are lots of, quite a lot of options. But I do think we need to worry about parking.
Impact on the neighbors.
Worry about parking and get the ordinances sorted out so we could deal with them. And I do think we need to worry just about making an exception here that why would we deny the next person?
The, the phrase, the, the buck stops here came to my mind a few minutes ago. It's very complicated, but it does bother me that it seems as though there's kind of the same set of conditions other than there are two less apartments, but it's still not, it's still not what the law says. And I'm, I don't know enough to understand why it's come back to us in essentially the same form. It seems like other...
Well, because at one time it was challenging something, the decision of the zoning officer. But now it's come in essentially as a request to provide what they have asked for, namely four apartments. Two houses.
Sorry, 162 is a single-family residence by approval. It was built as a single family and, and no, no applications, zoning applications were made for the expansion to one, to a, a two unit, you know, a, a secondary residence or in any case a three unit. But those, the, those two units, those two, or that unit has been eliminated, and that's 162. So it is in fact a single-family house. 166 was approved in 1974 as a two-family house, and that was approved by the borough, I believe. And with the stipulation that, that one unit is owner occupied. So they, they do have approvals and, and, and I think, I think that's really the basis of our review. We're just basically, in my opinion, asking for those, those two properties to be used as approved. I recognize that there's an issue with prior housing inspections and things like that, but unfortunately, that's not part of our determination. I mean, we're, we're to determine compliance or modification of a zoning regulation. And I don't see any basis to modify what's previously been approved.
So you're, maybe I misunderstood you, but you're saying that in principle, one of the houses can be owner occupied and have an apartment.
Yes.
That's been approved.
That's 166.
And that the other house has had no additional approval except to be a single-family residence. And in that way, those houses could be used. But we are being asked to change that situation, I believe.
And I'm saying I see no basis to change it.
Reason to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's my opinion, yeah.
Okay, I, I now understand the point.
I, I appreciate that the basement units are, have been eliminated. I know at, at the first hearing, I refused to vote because of the code and basement, and I'm, I'm glad that's taken care of. I, I appreciate also the, the history of this and the inspections and the night, not citing and, you know, all, all, all that, that confusion. I also understand, I believe I do, for me, the planner's main part of his presentation, which is not new or never been heard. There's, there's a zoning code, there's a municipal land use law, there's the master plan. Good or bad, the master plan and the principles of is written so loosely. You can always pull out walkability, bikeability, asset, same thing with the land use law. The code is a little bit more defined. And the struggle is to, and the land use, land use law says you're supposed, you can take into consideration those things, the master plan. But when, then we have to decide when does that trump the zoning code? As far as how to approve this, if it was to be approved, I can't see it as a C2. I can at best get to, of the five criteria, you're meeting two of them, not meeting two, and I'm not even sure on the fifth one. As a, as a C1, I know you've mentioned at the end, you thought perhaps it could meet the C1. And C1 speaks to the topography, it also speaks to the building, and you mentioned that. But it says a lawful structure. You can't approve it under a C1, in my opinion, if it's an unlawful structure to start with. And on the D, I try to get to it, but I think it is substantially impairing the plan and the ordinance. And I say that because I've been around Princeton long enough to know where a few illegal converted houses are. And if you, if we were to approve this, or I was to vote for it, I don't know how I could say no to other illegal or, or non-permitted conversions that come to us after the fact. Do they all get an approval under, you know, Medici? I, I can't get there on that. So I think it does set, you know, I'm, I'm not even sure it's a precedent if we approve it, but I, I, I know there's more out there. You know, I could take you to a couple of them. And they're nice houses. They're not slums. You know, a lot of the people that built in this town, especially the lower-income people, especially from other countries, they, they built, they converted their, their basement early on. They're out there, so I, I cannot support.
Anyone else?
I'd like to, I'd like to agree with pretty much everything that has been said so far. And unless other people want to speak, which obviously I, I think in light of the significance of this one, perhaps if everybody wants to speak, please do. But I'm inclined, especially at this late time, to, to move that we oppose this motion and reject it.
Second? Is there anyone else wishing to address the issues?
I just did a, a Roman Forum thumbs down.
So we, we somehow have to construct a, a motion that implies that. Does somebody want to do that?
Have your lawyer do it.
We, we need a motion.
Have your lawyer, have your lawyer do it. Don't struggle with it.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Sugg was asking me a question.
We're trying to construct a...
A motion to deny?
To deny. That's the short answer.
Well, here's my suggestion. From the comments you've made, my understanding is you don't believe they have met the criteria for the D1 variance. And if you don't feel they've met the criteria for the D1 variance, then the parking variance fails as well because there's nothing to attach it to. So I think for the purposes of tonight, and of course, you will get a resolution to review then, which I will invite you to comment on if you feel that it's not accurately summarizing your reasons for denying it. But my understanding is you don't feel that the applicant has demonstrated the site is particularly suited. And I phrase it that way because the standard for granting the D1, the use variances, does it particularly suit that location? Is the site particularly appropriate for that use? Doesn't have to be the only site it could be on, but is it particularly suited? Does it promote the purposes of zoning? And you've heard the planner talk about that. And then does it meet the negative criteria, i.e., does it negatively impact substantially, cause substantial detriment, neighborhood zone plan, master plan? All right, the... Correct. So that you've also found that based on the municipal records, the property received a certificate of occupancy, and that's 162, for use as a single-family home. 166 received approval in 1974 for use as a single-family dwelling with a flat, with the requirement that the owner must reside in either the main house or the flat. My understanding from your comments is that you feel that there will be substantial detriment to the neighborhood? That you've heard testimony about impacts which you believe are caused when the units are not owner occupied? You've heard testimony from the planner that the site is suited because it's convenient to everything? Walking and education and employment. And I think the applicant also argues that there have been prior housing inspections done? And they feel that that should be sufficient to create, should we say, an equitable argument on their behalf towards satisfying the criteria? My understanding is you don't support that, that based on the testimony you heard tonight, there certainly is confusion about the inspections. It appears there were periods where it was listed as single-family. When the owner testified, she used it as three-family unit. She's testified, she was told it should be that way, that it, all these inspections should show it as single-family and that she was complying with what she was told. The board hasn't heard any testimony other than the applicants in that regard. So I'm assuming that based on these reasons I'm on, I'm, I'm trying to articulate, the board does not feel the applicant has met its burden here. I will note that as far as creating a precedent, I know the board's aware that each case is judged on its own merits. But that's why the site suitability becomes important. Because if you, if you had found for the applicant, if you did believe that there was something unique about this location or particularly suited for this use, then that would allow you to distinguish it from future applications. I had pointed out, or I had asked a question from the planner, the location of this property and its suitability, from their perspective, would that not be the same if it were used as a single-family home rental versus an apartment rental? I don't know if the board agrees with that comment, that in fact it, it would provide the same benefits, meaning it's close to downtown, it's close to employment, it's close to shopping. Put another way, what is, what is distinguishing this site as particularly suited to, to family versus one family? So that may be a long-winded way of summarizing the reasons that you had tonight for denying the application. But if you agree with that, then who made the motion? Was it Harling? You made a motion tonight? As the maker of the motion, if you want to amend it to say for the reasons that have been articulated now, that's, that's why you're moving to deny. And the same thing with Mr. Schreiber. If he agrees, then he can amend his second to say, I, I, that's why I'm making a second.
Can I just try to add one thing? I, I think there was some confusion all along about a certificate of occupancy versus the rental certificate of compliance. So this whole timeline that's saying all these certificate of occupancies were issued, they're actually all the rental certificate.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, and I think that that is what caused a lot of the confusion in the first place. That they weren't certificates of occupancy.
That's true, that's absolutely correct.
I mean, I think the denial by the board of the request doesn't prevent earning income from the properties, renting them as either individual houses or if an owner lives in one, we, there's already something in place that we're permitted to have an apartment. So I, I don't think that there's, you know, anything wrong there. But I do think the issue of precedent is very important. And I don't think a case has been made that convinces me at any rate that turning these two properties into two apartments each is, is good. apartments each is, is good, uh, zoning, um, as far as the area go. So can we have a motion? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was just gonna say, I think everything was presented for the majority of the...
We can't hear you.
Yeah.
That was, that was...
Yeah.
Sorry, I keep forgetting.
That's also true.
Yeah, okay. So.
Okay, so I guess we can just say we have a motion to deny on the table, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Tenenbaum, it was your motion, so...
And you got all of the, the words that explain the reason for that denial. And so we need, if we have a motion for that, we need a second.
And you have, I think you have a second.
Steve Bartlett.
Mr. Schreiber did...
We have a motion and a second.
Right.
And just to make sure everybody's clear, so if you vote yes for the motion, you're voting to deny the request.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe we can call the law.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And do you concur, Ms. Ten?
Yes.
Thank you, Isna.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
I don't think we have any other business, so we are adjourned.